Time we'll go ahead and call our joint meeting of the town of Sparta and the county of Allegheny to order. If everyone will please rise for our pledge of allegiance. I have asked one of our veterans here in the county, Cody Miller, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bill Osborne will lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. My father, we come to you tonight with an humble heart, Lord, and a thankful heart, and thanking to you for the gift of and thanking you for the gift of life today. Lord, we pray for your guidance, understanding, and give us the wisdom and the knowledge we need, Lord, to guide our county and make our decisions that will be most pleasing unto you. We give thee all the praise and all the glory, Lord, for these blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
May be seated. Tonight's joint meeting is being brought to you on, we are, the Town of Sparta is holding this. We have graciously accepted the offer from Allegheny County and the commissioners to use their facility, and you can see why. So we want to thank them right off the bat. Everyone, for the town council, you have been given an agenda. I would like to have a motion of approval and a second.
Some move.
Second, all in favor, show of hands. Five oh for the town council.
All right, the, at this time, I'll call the Board of Commissioners together, and you see on the screen, the agenda for tonight as presented, and I would indicate a motion we approve.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda.
All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Five oh. Thank you.
Our first item on our agenda here tonight, item number A, is a presentation to the board by Allegheny Lives and Reverend Phil Edwards is here to make a presentation. Phil?
You brought the house with you tonight.
I didn't know I was so popular. Thanks. Amen. I'd like to mention Allegheny Lives has just got their 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation status right over there, so that's great. Pat, Gary, is this gentleman doing that? My name is Phil Edwards. I pastor New Covenant Church. For you that don't know, that's the red church out on Highway 18 South. I'm also on the board for Allegheny Lives. I'm here tonight to honor a group of individuals who saw a need in our community and decided to do something about it: suicide. I have the great privilege to honor the charter members of Allegheny Lives, a suicide prevention and education organization here in our community. So you may ask why? Why are we here? What do we do? I want to give you some statistics. This is from the North Carolina 2018 Facts and Figures. On average, one person dies by suicide every six hours in our state. Nearly twice as many people die by suicide in North Carolina annually than by homicide. The total deaths of suicide reflects a total of 26,565 years of potential lost life. Suicide cost North Carolina a total of $1,358,735,000 of combined lifetime medical and work loss in 2010 for an average of $1,157,355 per suicide death. Suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in North Carolina. It's the 10th cause of death, leading cause of death in the United States, and it's the 9th leading cause of death in our county here. Ash and Allegheny are always high on the list for high suicide rates, along with Stokes County and a small county out on the coast. I want to go over just some demographics of our county here, and I wanted to look at this one, one paper, just to say the need is great in our community. I know we can't read this here, but these are, these are suicide deaths by a race of people, and, and, and I wanted to show you this because we got this off of here for Allegheny County off the internet. Our population's 17,155, 100, that's 100 percent. 92 percent of us are white. 9 percent of us are Hispanic or Latino. 4 percent are some other race. Black or African American is 1 percent. Two or more races is 1 percent, and the only reason I bring that up to you is to let you know that the need is great in our county for our programs here for suicide prevention. And so we're really excited about what's going on in our suicide prevention program. We also have some numbers here. I think crisis hotlines for everybody, I want it just to be on TV. Crisis hotlines, 24 hours, emergency lines, we have suicide lines that can also be called. So if you get into our Allegheny County Resource Director, you'll find these numbers there for you. So if you know anybody or know anybody that is in that area.
These are coming, these are coming around, and they have those numbers on the questions in case you're concerned about some of them.
This organization began when a prominent citizen in our community, in our community committed suicide. This group saw the need and went to work on being there for those who were victims of suicide. I like to call it boots on the ground. I've had the privilege, since I have been, I've not been a member of the board that long, but I've had the opportunity to assist two families. And just recently, I was at the state, Virginia State Wrestling Tournament to watch my nephew win his fourth state championship, and I got a call, and I spent four hours on the phone with a young man who was going to commit suicide. And fortunately, he's still with us today. But thank God, we have somebody, or somebody could call, we have people that here that people can get a hold of, and we're excited about that. But what we're excited about tonight is our charter members, had it not been for their hard work and doing something about this, you know, we would not have the organization we have, or the knowledge we have, or the community knowledge that we have in it tonight. So I'm going to call out your names for our charter members. They only gave me 10 minutes to do that. They don't do that at my church. And so I'm really in a hurry here, so I'm going to call out some names. Charter members of Allegheny Lives, and we would, we'd love to have everyone's input. Anybody has any thing they would like to say, anybody's help. But tonight, I want to give you our charter members. First I want to call out is Bob Bamberg. You can give him a hand. Charter member.
Stay on it there, yeah.
Terry Johnson, charter member. Stacy Hawes, is Stacy here? We will get her later. Thanks for having us here tonight. We were, we're believing we'll have a street scape deal tonight, and we'll get on with it. Amen. God bless.
I got a whole week if I had to take names.
Thank you, Phil. And I think that I can almost speak for everybody on this board, and everybody around this, and everybody in this room, and those that are watching this on live TV on the stream here. If you know somebody that's going through something, encourage somebody to get some help. Going out that way doesn't help nobody, and we want to encourage you. If you're going through something, seek some help. You can call me. Hey, I'll throw my name out there. So, thank you, Phil, and thank the group there for doing an outstanding thing in our community. We appreciate that. And now we move on to what everybody, I think, is here for.
The main attraction, for lack of a better term.
If Michael Buffer was here, he'd say, "Let's get ready to rumble." So, street scape.
Don't do that.
No, we're not going to rumble. I'm going to let our town manager, Brian Edwards, go ahead and take over from here and do the introduction here for our Sparta street scape.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First speaker is going to be Ricky Brown, so Ricky will do a brief introduction, and then I'll give some background information.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, commissioners, thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks to all the citizens for being here tonight to talk about our community's business. I think it's really important to have this kind of turnout when we're talking about something this important. So I congratulate all of you for coming, which is really, really important. So, well, to get started, just look a little bit at project context, we'll go as fast as we can. This talks about the wheel of economic vitality that the county has moved on since 2015. There's a document available if anybody wants to look at it. But all of these parts of the wheel are important to our long-term economic vitality. Infrastructure is also very important, and the street scape water project is a very important part of our infrastructure development as we go forward. So we're talking about a very important thing tonight, but I want to make a point, that all of these things are intertwined. They're not mutually exclusive. Some would say, "Why would you talk about youth retention, or tourism, or small business development and talking about a street scape?" Because they're all intertwined. We've got to look at all of these things in order to make our community successful. Street scape is just one. If you look over the last number of years, there's a lot of things that have been going on from an infrastructure perspective. We got our Highway 21 improvements done. We got our hospital restructured and stabilized, so that we've got a long-term hospital facility in our community, which is extraordinarily important in a mountain community like ours. The Sparta Parkway has been completed. We've done a lot of work on our water sources with our Virginia partners. The elementary school is being remodeled. We've done various water and sewer projects. Broadband internet infrastructure in this county is one of the best in the state of North Carolina. About 90 percent of the homes in our community have access to broadband and Wi-Fi. That's better than some urban areas and many, many rural counties like ours. We've got to leverage that. Authentically, Allegheny has been invested in to become a vehicle for us to market our county to others throughout the state of North Carolina and beyond. And then our Christmas in Sparta effort, done by citizens that came together and said, "We want to make our community look a little better at Christmas time." And we had our first year last year. So you can see that a lot of things have been going on, and I'm sure there are others we could have there. Now it is time for us to look at the street scape as another important piece in the puzzle of economic development, of long-term economic vitality, and making our community better. So now I'd like to call on Brian to come up and talk about the project itself and where we are at this point.
Good evening, and it's a pleasure to be here, and very happy to see this large turnout. The, this project has been in process for a number of years. We've worked through a couple of different Board of Council members since this progress project has begun. So I'm going to...
Right.
Right.
Right there, right there.
Okay, here we go. The critical priorities for this project. Number one is the water and sewer infrastructure improvements. We believe that the water line down Main Street is in the neighborhood of 70 to 80 years old. We know it's just a matter of time until we start having serious issues with that infrastructure. So we believe it's the correct time to do that. Another important reason is our sidewalks. If you travel the sidewalks on any regular basis, you know that they are in bad shape and deteriorating, and it is not a healthy situation for people who need to walk and be around town. The turn lane through the center of town, early on, this was discussed as being an important component that needed to remain with the street scape. That provides for emergency vehicle response, and on crowded, narrow streets, that could be a limitation. So the center turn lane will remain. A lot of folks have asked about parallel parking, and could we go back to parallel parking, I'm sorry, to angle parking? And the answer is no, we can't, and one reason for that is to maintain that turn lane. And so I think the council has been consistent throughout. It's important that we keep that turn lane through town, and so we will continue to have parallel parking. The curb appeal for the downtown merchants, and anybody that's familiar with real estate and real estate sales and viable communities will tell you, curb appeal is very important to any kind of a productive merchandising retail business. An alignment with broader economic development plans that Ricky touched on earlier. The street scape is just one piece of a larger economic development project that we need to be thinking about in this community. The risk of doing nothing. The reason that the water line replacement and the paving must be done in conjunction. Every 12 to 15 years, the Department of Transportation does milling down and resurfacing of Main Street. That's part of their normal maintenance requirements, and US 21 is a federal highway, and it's under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation. If we coordinate this water line replacement along with the resurfacing, then the DOT will cover the majority of the cost of milling down and resurfacing the street. If we did this project independent of coordinating with DOT, the additional cost of milling down and resurfacing and doing the repairs after the water line would be all on the Town of Sparta. So, early on in this process, we started the conversation with the Department of Transportation, with Blue Ridge Electric, with Skyline Telephone, about how do we coordinate and everybody benefit from getting this project on one path? Let's see, were there any other? Well, the other reasons of why it would be important to go forward at this time, we have a very favorable interest rate on the initial loan, 1.875, I think that unheard of. We've also got significant amount of grant dollars that are allocated to this project at this time. The longer that the project is delayed, we will see escalating construction costs, and Ricky will touch later on the risk of declining property values if we don't do some things to make the economic development opportunities improved in this community. The project, as it is currently proposed, would be a 4.9 million project. It then consists of the water project, pave the street from Trojan Avenue to Grandview Drive, replace the sidewalks from Downton Street to Cheek Street, and this would be with eight-foot-wide sidewalks, make the sidewalks much more accessible and safe for pedestrians. The, would include the bump outs, so it would provide safe havens for people who are crossing the street. It makes it a little bit shorter crossing distance, also adds an enhancement, I think, to the, to the aesthetics of the downtown area. We would, with this project at 4.9, be able to either go underground or off-street with the, most of the overhead wires. So the tangled web of wires that over Main Street would be replaced with new traffic signal and the mast arm poles. We would add pedestrian lighting to the sidewalks. We have painted crosswalks, and we would install new signage. Here is kind of an overview. You can see the street with the bump outs and the enhancements that the street scape project would bring. The top one shows a kind of a current picture there of the downtown area. The lower one shows a more enhanced version that would include the wider sidewalks and the bump outs. As far as an update on funding, we have, this has been a project that has been, last September, we had a meeting in this room, and we talked about the project being at 3.5 million, and how could we get to that number? The town council at that point in time said to me, "Let's find every opportunity for funding, and if you can get it, most of it would be grant, would be what we need to pursue." So since that September time, we have had numerous conversations with USDA folks, Appalachian Regional Commission. We have reached out to our state representatives, and we continue to do that even today, to try to solicit more funds for this project. But right now, with the, with the information we received last week, there is a $961,000 grant available to the town if we go forward with this project at this time. Also, the interest rate, we have been using the budget of 3.5. That was based on the best information we had at the time. Based on conversations last week with USDA, we can secure this additional loan at a rate of 2.5 percent. So this gives you an overview... So, this gives you an overview of the total budget. We have committed to the project now 409,000 grant from USDA. The 961 that I just mentioned to you, an Appalachian Regional Commission grant of 300,000. The DOT reimbursement, this would be, the DOT will sign a municipal agreement with the town. We will do the milling down and resurfacing of the road, and then the DOT will reimburse the town up to $295,000 for those costs. Town contribution of 99,000. That is a total of non-loan of $2,064,000. The first USDA grant that is already committed, 1.554 million, is at 1.87% interest. The second loan would be at 1,282,000. That would be at 2.5%. So, the total loan for this project, 2,836,000. Total project, 4.9 million. If you look at those numbers and that project, essentially, we are getting the water line in the ground for what we are borrowing, and we have grant funds and other funds that are basically going to pay for the streetscape improvements. You see there, the loan is 58%, non-loan 42%. Based on my experience, I can tell you that's virtually unheard of, to have that kind of proportion of grant to loan. The request to the county is 432,000, amortized over 15 years at a 2.5% rate to help repay USDA loan number two. That total loan is going to be 1,282,000, and we're asking the county to help pay the debt service on 432,000 of that amount. There you can see the breakdown of the town and county proportion. Town portion of the loan, 2,404,000. The county's participation at 432. That's the total loan amount of 2.836 million. The loan repayment schedule is follows. The town would be obligated for the entire amount of the loan. We're asking the county to help on the debt service for the 432,000, but the entire obligation would be in the name of the town. The total debt service for the town, based on the 1.54 and the 850,000, is 89,430 per year. We currently have in the town budget 63,500 that is dedicated to debt service. We would need an additional 25,930 to cover the rest of that loan. That would cause an impact on the town tax rate of 2 cents. Our current rate is 38 cents. That would make the town tax rate go to 40 cents. For the county portion, the 432,000, term of 15 years, 2.5% annual debt service requirement from the county would be 34,891. That estimated impact on the county tax rate would be .0022, 2 tenths of a cent on the county rate. Other potential funding, we are continuing to, we have already made application to Appalachian Regional Commission for an additional 200,000. I have made a request to our state representatives for 500,000 to support this project. We will be making, have not yet, but we'll be making application to Golden Leaf for any support we might get from them, and then there will be an effort for private contributions to the project. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or we'll, Ricky Brown, he's going to talk about some more, and then we'll open it up for discussion at that point.
So, we're going to look at some of the project potential that we think exists. So, the streetscape is time. We've been talking about it a long time. We think it certainly, as Brian had mentioned earlier, will improve the aesthetics of our town. It'll increase our livability. Streets won't be as bumpy. Sidewalks will be safer. It'll be more attractive to our citizens and our visitors. We hope it will increase the number of visitors that we have, will attract new residents to our community, drive business investment in our community, as people are willing to invest in our county, given that we're willing to invest in ourselves, will help drive economic development, as it partners with many other things going on in our county, and ultimately create more jobs, because that's what economic is really all about, is creating jobs. And make no mistake about it, this is a part of the puzzle that will help us create jobs in the future. So, there's been discussion about how do you measure the return on investment in a project like this? And these are the things that we talked to the town council about a number of months ago, but you can see, we can measure sales tax revenue increases, occupancy rates of commercial space, increased private investment, property values, increased new businesses downtown, property tax revenues driving upward, decreasing repairs and maintenance on deteriorating infrastructure, and ultimately decreasing the risk of pedestrian accidents. So, we can measure all of those things, and we will over time, and we think it's important that we get a return on our investment. But, as Brian said, if you think about it, if you're financing the water project, and you're getting a gift of the streetscape improvements, you could pay for the water project long-term from water rates, because that's what you would ultimately get repaid on a water project. And the streetscape, because of the gift, if you will, through the grants and other things, allows us to really get a real big investment when the investment is nothing in the streetscapes. Certainly, that way to look at it, others might decide it's not the way to look at it, but you certainly can look at it that way. What we've got to do is leverage this investment. There's a lot of talk about us doing this investment, and it's just going to be a panacea for our community. Make no mistake about that, that's not going to happen. We build this thing, we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us. We've got to encourage the business owners downtown to invest. We've got to look for new investment to come into the community. On Thursday of this week, we have a gentleman that's going to come into the community to talk about historic tax credits, and how we could use that potentially to get people to invest in their buildings. There's opportunity zone financing that the federal government puts out that we're going to have to learn about. We don't know everything about it today. There's facade financing that's available that we've got to learn about. But, the point is, the streetscape is the start. Now, we've got to figure out how to leverage that investment to get the opportunity that we want to have, which is a more vital town, a town that's growing, a town that is successful in the long term. So, just look at this. This is the current tax situation in our community. We're the 19th lowest county tax rate in the state of North Carolina. We're the median amongst the 23 western counties, and we're the 10th lowest overall tax situation in North Carolina, when you include gas tax, sales tax, occupancy tax. You put all that together, we're the 10th lowest tax situation in the state of North Carolina. We're the 65th lowest out of 585 communities in our town tax rate. This is only here to give you the facts on where we stand with others relative to our taxable ability, to show us if we have to raise taxes, and you saw what Brian indicated, a modest increase in our taxes would still keep you in a relatively very good position against our western peers and against our state peers.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We do this, no doubt, and anybody in our circle, this is a great place to live in the town.
Yes.
So, having come here yourself, what was the reason that you came here? Could you share with us why you and your family came here?
I will, exactly. I don't want to tell you the whole story about why we wanted to be in a farm, but I'll tell you why I came here.
Let's encapsulate it just...
All right, so here it is, Millie. I came here because I was in Winston-Salem, and I needed to be an hour from Winston-Salem, and this place was within that hour range.
Right.
That was first. Number two, it was beautiful.
Right.
So, when I drove around here, and I looked off the deck of the house that I ultimately bought, saw Bullhead Mountain, it was absolutely beautiful. Thirdly, the reason we chose not this to be a second home, but a primary home, was we got to know the people of Allegheny County. And those people made a big difference in our lives, and we've worked with so many people that we respect so much, their hard work, their prudence, their humility. It's just a great place to live. But, we also looked at factors, like we had a hospital, which we worked really hard to make sure we kept that hospital. Tax rates didn't really come into my decision to or not to buy here. It was really about, because I thought it made the decision for me and my family for the long term, for us to make a decision to live here. And make no mistake about it, I could have lived anywhere I wanted to live. We chose Allegheny County because we thought the potential for this county was absolutely phenomenal. We've made a long-term investment here, and we think that long-term, this can be a place that my grandchildren can grow up and live here, and that they will look at me and say, "Granddaddy, thank you very much for locating in Allegheny County, because it was a wise decision on your part." And the way we're going to make that happen is I work really hard for this community on lots of different things, like the streetscape and many other things. I'm committed to this community. I'm committed to this county, and I'm going to do everything in my power to make it better.
That is, absolutely goes without saying, and all the things that you've done. And in reference to this particular graphic, wasn't the fact that your money would go further here than other western North Carolina counties, wasn't that a factor that was attractive to you?
Affordability is always a factor that is positive, but the affordability factor doesn't just relate on taxes. It is about property values, and it is about the rate of taxes on those property values. And what, long-term, I believe we've got to work toward, is to see us prosper, all of us prosper.
Oh, absolutely.
And prosperousness looks like rising values and increasing home prices.
Absolutely.
And a bustling downtown. That's what this is all about. This slide is about showing you all, and I said this the other Tuesday night, is I congratulate you all, because you're running town and county governments with a relatively low tax rate on a small population, and you're stretching dollars a long ways.
And one reason we do that is...
And I congratulate you.
Well, and it's, people are very conservative here, they're very frugal, and we've always tried to be that way. But, one reason that we, it's absolutely imperative that we do that, is so people will come here, because that's our big draw. It's cheapest place in the mountains, using power, and so, our other folks can stay here. So, your point that yes, one factor you looked at is that your money would go further here than other parts of western North Carolina. That was, that was what I want to kind of throw into this, and I'll shut up and let you...
I think you're putting words in my mouth, Millie. I didn't say that was the reason I came here. Affordability was not on the top of my list.
No, but it was a reason that you considered in multiple, multiple, with, in the whole package.
One hour was the decision that was made. This was the best place within one hour for me.
Well, a lot of folks that I talked to and just had, just met a new neighbor, as a matter of fact, over the weekend, bought a place that had been on the market for about 10 years. That was one of their major things. They said, "You know, we could retire here in the mountains and have a place here in the mountains, and our money could really go a long ways." So, that's something, by us being conservative, that is something we have done intentionally to be attractive.
I think that is, I think that's what that shows, that you've been very prudent with taxes.
So, I'll shut up. Go ahead.
All right. Let's continue on.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, so what we tried to do, this is a little different than we did last week. We've honed this down a little bit to make it more realistic, but this is a way to look at that return on investment. And so, you would look at property tax revenues, look down at the, number one, these are the footnotes of how we came up with these numbers. A 1% increase in year one, 2.5% in year two, which is the year of revaluation, then 2.5% a year until the last year, when it's the second revaluation, when it goes up 5%. Sales tax, starting at 2.8 million, that's forecasted to go up 3% without the streetscape until it's in, and 5% a year thereafter. On both of these, these rates were based on fact. The first one, North Carolina has been growing real estate from 2012 to 2017 at a 25% clip during that period, 5% a year. These numbers would fall below that on average, about 3.5%. Sales tax revenue in the 3% to 5% range would be better, would be less than what West Jefferson did when they had about 6.4%. So, both of those are relatively conservative. They're not pie-in-the-sky numbers. Other revenue comes from other sources available to the county, primarily government transfers. We kept that at 2.5%. That had previously been at 1. We thought that was more realistic. So, you see all the different totals and the total revenues of 137 million. Expenses are being forecasted to go up 2.5% a year, 136 million. The streetscape payments over that period, 242, and a margin of 986,000. Now, what that says is, this could be a pretty good investment. But, what is a forecast? A forecast is a forecast. I've seen 1,000 of them. Very rarely do they exactly come to fruition. Under no circumstances do I believe that we will see a decline because of the streetscape. It may not be these numbers, but it will be numbers that are better than what we're experiencing today. So, this just gives you a picture of what might would be if these numbers were to come to fruition, a pretty good investment for the town and the county. Those numbers, by the way, are all county numbers. They're not town numbers. So, this gets back a little bit to Millie's question. What about the affordability of this project? Now, this looks at the streetscape specifically. This is not looking at what other decisions you all as bodies may have to consider. This is streetscape specific. What we know is that the average property value in the county is about 140,000. So, if you're in the town, you've got a $140,000 project, that 2 cent that Brian talked about would cost you $28 of additional tax per year. If you add the county tax in town for that, it adds another $3.08. So, if you take that, you've got a $31 per year increase in your taxes in town, in town, $2.59 per month. So, that's less than a bottle Pepsi. That's what the marginal increase is to a town resident with the way this is being financed now, and the county, or this town's contribution to the tax rate along with what the county has to do. So, you see, it's very affordable, not changing dramatically, the quotient that Millie talked about. So, what happens if you do nothing? There is no, no outcome. So, doing nothing doesn't mean we're going to get no outcome. So, this would just give you an example. If property declines 5%, and we saw a decline in this county between '15 and '16, the latest data we could find, dropped 5% in our county. What if it does that again? What if we see 10% decline in property values if, over time, we don't attract people to come into our county? You may have to raise taxes between 3% and 6% just to raise the $9.7 million we have today in property tax revenue. So, there's no potential not cost. There is a potential cost to doing nothing, and so, this is just trying to point that out, that it may cost us more in taxes. This is another way to look at, what does it do to that $140,000 property owner? If we were to get a 5% decline, and then 1% a year over the next nine years, you could look at $18,500 in property loss. To invest, if you were in town, $31 a year for 10 years, for $310 investment, you might save yourself $18,500. Maybe it goes the other way, and we get a 5% bump and a 1% increase out over time, you might make $21,000. So, again, just examples that shows what the potential could be. So, making a decision that says, "I can't charge 31 more dollars," may actually be very detrimental to our residents in our town and our county. So, again, streetscape is one step on the journey. We've got to market our county when this is done. We've got to get authentically Allegheny, and every resource we've got marketing-wise to be focused on telling the world about us, what our advantages are, what our opportunities are, and if we don't market ourselves, we're not going to be as successful as we otherwise would. There are other things that we've got to do, not streetscape-related, but part of the plan. We've got to get early childhood and after-school programs in place. We get our, we've got to get our K through 12 better outcomes and work with the school system. We've got to get our community college to be more focused in our county, to get better students prepared for the new world, and for us as we think about broadband and other things. And we've got to get a collaboration of government, organizations, and individuals. And I think that might be as important as anything. We all got to get on the same page. We've got to decide... We've got to decide where we want to go. We've got to decide what the things we can really leverage our competitive advantages on, like Millie's talking about, affordable place to live, retirement, for instance, or broadband. How do we become a digital center, leveraging our broadband capacity? We all got to get on this same page to say, "This is what we're going to do to make our community better." We've got to focus on economic development, again, that's about jobs. And then ultimately, in, in life, you're always moving ahead or you're moving backwards. There's no way to stay the same. Communities are the same thing. You've got to move forward. And I would say that this has always been the potential for collaboration in our county and our town on this project. Because what's good for Allegheny County is good for Sparta. What's good for Sparta is good for Allegheny County. Sparta sits right in the middle. And how we benefit together is what this discussion is all about. But we've got to make sure that we're growing and not withering away slowly and but surely. Again, the wheel, just to bring it back, all of this thing, all of these things are tied together. And, and let me just, I used an analogy the other night, and I think it's, it's good to point this out as you all considering this. You know, think about a home that's owned by family members, it's got a leaking roof, but they can't decide how to come together to fix it. Can't decide on the strategy, can't decide on the financing, and what do they do? They leave the roof leaking, and the house becomes less valuable, less livable. And I think that's a little bit of where we are now. We've got a great town. We've got a great town with a great future. But we've got to put a new roof on it. That's what this is about. We've got to put that roof on it. We've got to decide how we come together and say, "We need to do this for all of our benefit, and make this happen, and make that roof come to fruition in our community." Others have done it. Elkin, Wilkesboro, North Wilkesboro, Hickory, New Bern, Withfull, West Jefferson. Right now Hickory just passed a $40 million bond issue. You've seen that we have had our neighbors say, "We do these things. We're investing in our communities." And you're going to see a slide in a little bit that shows that they've actually outperformed us, especially our local neighbors. But the, the one on the bottom here is my hometown. I grew up in Robertsonville, North Carolina. My wife grew up in Robertsonville, North Carolina. 50 years ago, when we grew up there, it was an idyllic little town, a little farming community, great downtown, great school, great athletics. Like what I hear about Sparta 40 or 50 years ago. Today, my little downtown looks like a third-world country. Faces of the buildings have fallen into the streets. We moved our mother-in-law out of Robertsonville not too long ago. She's now an Allegheny County resident. And when we were there, emptying her home, we rode down the street, and I just thought, "Wow, something's different." The road had been paved on Main Street. The sidewalks had been improved. And there were crosswalks, brick crosswalks across the street. So I said, "I got to take a picture of this." So we stopped at one of the crosswalks, and we took that picture right across the street into a building that was boarded up and the windows knocked out of. We sent that to Brian Edwards. And I said, "Brian, if Robertsonville, North Carolina can do a streetscape, by God, Sparta can do a streetscape." Because I'm telling you, they've got no potential like we have potential. Yet, one more piece of the puzzle to unlocking our potential. All of these folks have done it. You may hear from another couple of towns tonight in our comment period. So we talked about West Jefferson. We only put this slide in here to reference what they got out of their streetscape, and to use it as an example of why we chose 3% to 5% increase in sales tax revenue. They got 6.36%, $19,000. The $19,000 should jump off the page, I'd say, "Wow, that's mighty luck." But you do remember, the sales tax kind of comes in at the county level and is a portion to the towns, and their total sales tax in West Jefferson is only about 280,000. So, surprising number, but that's what they get out of their sales tax numbers. So you see the total growth over that period of time. Private investment increased 53%, mostly in the 50 to $250,000 range. Their storefronts were reoccupied. And then this is sort of a telling story. Retail sales. This was in our paper a couple of weeks ago, looking at the years '06 and '07, just before the financial downturn, as the base. And you can see Ash is up 154%, Wilkes 140%, North Carolina 136%, Surrey 133%, and Allegheny 109%. Ash streetscapes, Wilkes streetscapes, Surrey streetscapes. Investments in their communities, Allegheny 109. We know our real estate has fared worse over the last number of years compared to North Carolina. We're lagging. We've got to do something. Streetscape is one of the things that we have to do. So Dale Cavaney came up with this, and it's a great way to end his presentation. "Now faith is confidence in what we hope for, and assurance about what we do not see." Hebrews 11:1. There is no guarantees, none. The only guarantee is if you vote yes tonight, is we all get up tomorrow, redoubling our efforts to work to make this community better. That is what faith is about. Believing in something that you can't see and working for it. I promise you, I'm going to work to make this place better. You vote for this process tonight, I'm going to do everything I can, I hope I work with each and every one of you to work on it, and every one of these people out here, to make our community better. It will not happen unless we make a commitment to get up tomorrow and work harder than we've ever worked, to make smarter Sparta and Allegheny County better. It is the right time to do this project. Thank you very much for listening to Brian and I. We appreciate you very much.
As you have listened to Brian and Ricky present the Sparta streetscape, we are getting ready to open it up for our public comments.
We aren't going to be given, we are not going to be given the opportunity to ask questions, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to bring it down here at the end, where we do your comments, I'm going to bring them back up, unless you want to ask somebody right now. Go ahead. If you want to ask somebody, go ahead.
I have a number of questions for Brian.
Okay.
Why were we not given the scope of work so that we could study it before this meeting?
Mr. Earl?
The only material that the county commissioners were given were the figures. Of course, we have seen the slide presentation. Mr. Brown has spoken individually with each commissioner. But I'd like to see some questions, basically on what will be done. Are we going to take care, are you going to take care of the drainage problem?
We are.
I did not see that on the slide.
There was a, there was a drainage issue on Downton Street that will not be addressed. It's outside the scope of the work. But our engineers are here this evening, and we have been able, through modifications of the existing design, to accommodate the, it's not what we would prefer to do, but it certainly addresses the questions, and it will be an improvement over what we have.
Is that going to meet the standards?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, whenever I talk about the scope of work, whenever I came in and I asked Terry, he had a document that details dollar-for-dollar down. This is the type of thing that we'd like to look at so that we can make a decision because we are dealing with county funds. So the drainage will be included in this 3.9...
4.9.
Or 3.5?
Yes.
The cost to the merchants, if you are going to move the electrical service, as depicted on the slides, do you have an idea of how much the electrical service changes are going to cost merchants?
I do not have it individually, but I have talked with several of the merchants. Most of them are already served off the back street. So we only have a few that will be impacted with the change of service. And I met, actually, last week with Joel Sauer. We are working right now on how we would accommodate those merchants if it creates any inconvenience to them, or a cost that they can't deal with. We will work with those folks.
Okay, so you've dealt, you have that?
Yes.
Thank you. How many parking spaces are we going to lose?
We believe about six. And four of those, we would be losing, really, we are in violation right now of the current standards, because we allow parking right up to the edge of the street at the intersection. And that, you're supposed to have a 40-foot setback from the traffic signal, so we will lose those four places, two of them right in front of the courthouse. And we believe that the ones in front of the courthouse will be very beneficial because we need to do some additional work there at the courthouse to put more of a focus on that building. So we'll lose two in front of the courthouse, and then one each on the other corner. So that, that will be five places we will lose, and likely one other at another location. However, the town does own a new parking facility that we will be bringing online, and that will accommodate more than 60, we believe, parking spaces. So there will be a significant improvement in the parking situation downtown.
If I remember right, that parking lot is not paved at this time.
It is not paved.
Is the paving of that parking lot and the marking of that parking lot included in these figures?
No, it is not.
So that would be a future project?
It would be, yes.
What about an engineering report on the future water needs whenever you do the replacement of the lines?
Well, future needs, we basically are, will be serving the same people that we serve now. So unless there was a significant expansion of a requirement in town, and that's highly unlikely because all the Main Street is currently occupied, so there will be no, no real change in terms of the service that we're providing.
Okay. And do we know where the water lines are?
We do, yes.
What is your contingencies in case you run into some unforeseen problems?
We have a $202,000 contingency currently built into the project. $200,000 contingency.
Well, thank you for not saying the county. All right. Mr. Chairman, those are the questions that I have, and I've received satisfactory answers. Thank you, sir.
Well, go ahead, and we'll ask everybody here on the board and the council if they have any questions for Brian and Ricky right now, before we do our public comments.
I've had several people ask me about the courthouse wall, and the original plan, of course, said to take out the courthouse wall, move it back four feet, and put up fake rock. Since what we've been presented as council members, as the scope of work has changed periodically, when people ask me about the rock wall at the courthouse, I tell them, "You know, we don't know exactly yet exactly what we're going to do and what we aren't going to do, because we haven't sat down with final figures to know what we're going to do and what we aren't going to do." So, at one point, I think Mr. Brown said, "Well, we're going to do away with the trees." So I've gotten some pushback on that, and people said, "Well, what about the trees?" So then at another point, someone said, "Well, we're not, we don't need the big half-million-dollar pole across Main Street." And I said, "Well, at one point, the council, what we agreed to proceed with in March, did away with that." But at, at what point, I guess my question, at what point are we actually going to see exactly what's incorporated and what's not?
Well, the, number one, the wall will be as it is. There is no plan...
Excellent.
Anything, do anything with the wall.
Excellent.
The council did not make a decision about the traffic signal. There was discussion about it, but, Millie, I believe the way that works is there's a motion, a second, and a vote. And I don't recall there ever being any vote taken about any verbal agreements or traffic signals. So I don't believe that that's been any agreement on that particular point.
It wasn't an agreement per se, but in March, when you presented us with, with scaled-down version just a bit, that was part of the thing that was taken out.
There are many, many moving parts to this thing, because we have continuously been working to get to a project scope and financing that would work. And we now have a plan with final draft, I'm sorry, not draft, construction documents.
Okay.
We have a bid from a qualified contractor, so the, the prices are firm.
So, the, the stoplight arm, it was my understanding initially that to put that in place would require taking down part of the rock wall.
It will take the corner. It will take a portion of the corner, yeah.
So...
But the further discussion was, did the county at that time want to do additional work and with steps and other things? That has not proceeded at all. There will be a small portion of the corner that will have to be, yes.
Right. But the rest of, well, that's just some questions people presented to me, and otherwise, you know, we're always interested to get the latest update and know exactly what we are going to do.
Do any, any other council member that would like to have any questions for Brian or Ricky?
Any total parking spots is there on Main Street when this is done, roughly?
You know, Bill, I, I've got that number, but I, I don't know off the top of my head. Kevin, we, we have surveyed that a number of times, and I, I'd be afraid just to give you an answer. But we will lose about six of what's currently there.
So the, so the trees being planted under the sidewalks is out of this project?
That is not currently included in the 4.9 project.
Okay.
That's correct.
Good. It should be. Cost, do you have an idea what the cost would be for the milling if we didn't line this up with the DOT and doing it within their schedule? Do you have any idea what the cost would be to do it outside of that?
Well, it, it would be basically what their estimate is. We actually believe it's going to cost a little bit more than the 295. 295 is what the DOT has allocated to this. Based on our estimates, we believe it's more in the range of 325 to...
340?
Yeah, 325 to 340. And we have, we have made an appeal to Department of Transportation to increase that amount of money. At this point, they have not been able to do that, but we continue to press them to allocate more money for the milling down and the resurfacing.
Chair Bobby Earl?
I think, for Brian, just, just to be sure that, we've received several pages in the last few days.
Right.
But I would appreciate that we could get a copy of the presentation that Ricky made tonight. And I think we should have had that before we had this meeting, so we could at least catch ourselves up to date with the new program possibilities are. There's four things you're taking out of the original, out of your original estimates. Is, is that right?
Well, there's the drainage and the trees and what other, there probably are some...
The drain at 125,000, the low-cost, what, tree grates at 75,000?
Yes.
That's coming out?
That's out.
Removing the benches, the bike stands, trash cans?
Yeah.
That's 30, 39, or was it 44 or 39?
I, I don't have those numbers. 30, 30.
And then you're also taking out the tree outlets, the conduit and the wiring, which, according to this last paper, was 77,000.
That's for the trees, yes.
So that brings us, two weeks ago, you needed 1.4 million from the commissioners. Last week, you hit a, a good home run, eight, 900 and some thousand.
Yeah.
So now you're looking for the county for 432.
That's correct.
Okay. If, is, is there a way that the town could do this financing themselves without the county? As we've discussed before, you have, you borrowed just about as much as you can borrow where you are right now, is that correct?
Well, the, the town, we are not anywhere close to the legal limit of the town borrowing, so, but I do feel like that the, the burden on the town residents is at a very high level, and it would not be fair to the town residents to increase it. It would be at least another penny if the town did this solely on their own, without any support from the county. Also, I believe it would jeopardize our opportunity to get help from the state. I think what our elected representatives are going to be looking for is to see that the county and the citizens are on board with this project. And I think that will significantly increase our opportunity to get state funding toward this project. Now, if the county decides not to do this, or they don't do it, you know, with, with some support, then I think that sends a signal to our state representatives, and I think that will have a negative impact on our ability to get state funds for this project.
But your board's not 100% in favor of this?
The, the board has not voted on that.
So, back to my original question is, there is a way that you could, the town could, finance this entire project?
If the, if the town council voted in favor of a 3-cent increase, yes.
Anyone else on the panel I'd like to say, huh?
I'm sorry.
I'm satisfied with the information I have. I think it's going to be a lot of work afterwards, going along with what Bobby said. I think the town and county are connected, and I can't see us not being a part of this.
Anybody else? All right. With that being said, I think we're ready for a few public comments, and we'll open up our public comment period. The guidelines for this public comment is anyone that wishes to make a comment, you'll have three minutes. County manager has his little stopwatch up there, ready to go.
And you don't have to use it all if you need it.
You don't have to use it all. I do ask on behalf of the commissioners and the town council that in the interest of time that you please do not repeat the same information. If you're for something, it's okay to get up and say, I agree with such and such what they said, or I agree with whatever. No need to beat the same horse two or three times, okay?
Wesley, if we've got another town council comments, so we have another opportunity after we hear these nice folks, okay?
There is an overflow seating in the Board of Elections office, so we want to make sure that those folks have a chance to voice their opinion. So Ricky, if anybody comes up to you, please make sure that I'm made aware that they're wanting to speak.
It is about a 20 or 30 seconds delay from you.
It is, and have them come there, and we'll give them an extra two or three minutes after we're finished here. So I please ask you to be respectful. You can ask any questions to the town manager or to, I would even open it up to Mr. Brown, if you want to open it, since he was the presenter here, or anybody alongside the commissioners or the town council. Please be respectful, and when your time is up, please concede and go back to your seat, and we'll let somebody else get up and talk. When you do come up to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record, and whether you feel like they should financially participate in the streetscape project, that is the county. Just please raise your hand, and I'll bring you on up. I have one in the very, very back, back there, that raised his hand first, so come on up.
I'm Ben Erlinson, 114 Hidden Lake Lane, Glade Valley. I was born in Elkin, North Carolina. My father and I built a home here at the base of Bullhead Mountain in the mid-1990s. I've spent most of my life in the mountains and forests of Allegheny County. It is my permanent home. We are engaging in an interesting municipal project with long-term implications for success and failure of economies and communities in the town of Sparta and Allegheny County within a much larger global context. Considering the ties to economic development for the streetscape project communicated by the Chamber of Commerce, the town of Sparta, and Allegheny County leaders, should we not also consider this waterline and streetscape project to be a business venture? If so, let's consider Allegheny and Sparta resident and non-resident taxpayers to be de facto investors in this venture. Either way, I've got a few questions. How will we know that this streetscape project is successful? What are the current definitions of success for this project? What does failure look like for this project? Which organizations and individuals will be held accountable for the failures of this project? How will they be held accountable, and by whom, and to what end? What sort of recourse will taxpayers have in the event of project failure? What happens if and when taxes need to be raised again for additional phases of the streetscape project? What happens when there is a surplus and we no longer need the tax dollars to pay for the streetscape? Will taxes be lowered again? How are we planning to enforce the economic goals of the streetscape project? Who has authority to enforce these goals? For example, what happens if a successful business that doesn't fit the tourism-centric streetscape model takes up space in the streetscape environment and refuses to leave? Who will regulate these rogue endeavors and how? I certainly have many more questions. As I mentioned, this is the sort of project that can garner national attention for its successes and failures. All stakeholders involved in this long-term project should be excited that we are interested, we are fascinated, we are observing, and we are reporting. I look forward to an ongoing, open discussion about the successes and failures of this project. Thank you.
You may. I have one in the back, right back here.
My primary home is in Wilmington, but I also have a home here in Allegheny County in the Old River Club at 117 New River Drive. In 2005, I accepted a request to invest in the purchase and the development of the Old River Club. I retained one lot for my home, which was finished in 2017. Since then, I have grown to enjoy this area's less busy way of life and to appreciate the area's physical beauty and the area, of the area, and also the soundness and kindness of the Allegheny people. Many areas of our state have recovered from the Great Recession, but those areas are restricted for the most part to urban areas. The rural areas have not recovered, and indeed, many are going backwards from a growth standpoint. And without growth, there is a dwindling of opportunity for our residents, and most distressingly, our rural youth. Without growth, our youth must find opportunities elsewhere, and as this occurs, the decline will accelerate. In the late '70s and '80s, Wilmington's downtown was experiencing a retraction of investment. Suburbanization was in full bloom, resulting in a steady decline of building stock and public infrastructure. I was fortunate at that time to have been a part of an effort to revitalize Wilmington's downtown. A nonprofit company, Downtown Area Revitalization Effort, Inc., was formed to encourage investment and activity. In the late '80s, I was the president of that company. I will not go into detail except to say that the effort was successful. Measured in tax base, property values have risen from about 80 million in 1980 to 800 million today. Wilmington's downtown has become a big draw for visitors and locals alike, and its property command, its properties command some of the highest values in the area, even when compared to ultra-value beaches. In 2015, Wilmington's riverfront downtown was listed by USA Today as the best in all of America. Picking through the most important factors that provided the spark for investment, I can honestly state that the initial investments by the city council and by the county commission was those important, that was the spark. That's what happened. That's what started. A single property owner can renovate their building, but it takes the public sector to make public infrastructure investments. The city constructed a small riverfront park and invested in streetscape improvements similar to those that we've talked about tonight. The county acquired the closed Belt Berry Department Building and renovated it for the main library and renovated a historic courthouse that stood dilapidated on a very visible corner. These investments demonstrated commitment, and the private sector responded. The project in downtown Sparta will likely be the same type spark for private sector to come within with their dollars and energy. In fact, I have thought for some time that there's a pent-up demand from the private sector to invest in downtown Sparta, as evidenced by the investment that I've seen over the past few years. I asked you to do all you can to evidence a belief, a belief in the fact, as I see it, that downtown Sparta is indeed the heart and the heartbeat of Allegheny County. This project deserves the public funding necessary to complete all the work planned, including the streetscape. I am very confident that it will bring a return to the county and to the city, and the majority of the property owners and residents of Allegheny County will be proud to have been a part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All the way in the back.
As the road approaches the podium. Good evening. My name is George Fevels. I own two properties here in town. I just have some questions. Just kind of give you a little historical thing. My hometown did a streetscape many years ago. The one thing that was critical, as Mr. Brown alluded to, was it is a lot of things linked together. The building, the businesses, owners and the building owners did not do anything, and of course, the streetscape failed, okay? People did not go back downtown or anything else. One of the good things that y'all have decided on is removing the trees, because the trees, they put them in my hometown, and it destroyed the sidewalks. So as you can see, money was spent over and over again. Here are my questions, because I would, I'll tell you, if you're not growing, you're dying. And that was said by Lou Holtz at a commencement, college commencement. Has the town received any commitments from the businesses or the building owners for upgrading the fronts of the buildings so that not only is the street aesthetically pleasing, that the buildings are aesthetically pleasing? Because we have a lot. What is it, the soap opera? That's not a real good-looking building, okay? So those are things. Because I agree with Mr. Brown's assessment, in Robesonville, it does you no good to have nice sidewalks and a nice streetscape that goes up into boarded-up buildings with broken windows. One of the things, too, several months ago, when we had this meeting in the town council, and several of these gentlemen here on the front row gave some compelling arguments for it, is they are also property owners here in town. One of the most funny things that was said at the end of the presentations was by Councilwoman Richardson there when she said, we are accepting donations. Has the town received any private donations?
No.
Okay. So that's something else that we need to think about, okay? I am one, have no heartburn, we're throwing in a few dollars here and there, and pick up cans along the side of the road and turn them in for aluminum prices. So that's another thing. I'm a little concerned about the average of $140,000. Both of my properties are significantly more than $140,000 in average, so my taxes are going to go up since I'm town and city. But on top of that, we're getting ready to do, we're in the process of re-Allegheny. So again, is, you know, I've never been through a reassessment of values, property values, that they went down. So again, we're going to anticipate more taxes for that. Another thing I'd like to know is the county, or will the county and town consider consolidation of services? There are probably several offices within the county and the town that are duplicate of effort that might be able to be combined. The one thing I am concerned about is we refer to retail tax sales coming in. We are compared, as it was in both presentations earlier and tonight, about it being Ash, Surrey, and Wilkes. As we all know, they have big-box retail stores. We have one through the line, which is a Dutch-owned big-box store. Is the town considering an enterprise zone to help draw in some businesses? And will you commit to reducing our taxes once the loan's paid? Thank you.
Thanks, George. Jack, how is that? Or, okay, yeah, my guy was there.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sean Horton of 266 Old River Club Way, and I've owned property in the county since 2005. I live and work in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm the co-owner of Trust Builder Group. We're a home building and development and real estate firm. My wife and I love Allegheny County, and we love to bring our two kids here. We're here about 10 days a month, on average. Now, we chose Sparta as our adopted hometown. I don't know if you saw the Andy Griffith episode, Stranger in Town, but I'm that guy. I'm the adopted. This is my adopted hometown. I see the potential of Allegheny County from the perspective of a part-time resident. There has been an economic boom over the past several years, and for the most part, Allegheny County has not participated in it. But it doesn't have to stay that way. I'm here to encourage the most powerful people in the room. That's you guys. And you've got a pretty big room. I think it's something like 235 square miles. And what do you do when you're the most powerful person in the room? You leverage your influence for the good of all the other people in that room. And what an opportunity you guys have before you to have an impact for all the current and future generations of Allegheny County. I just ask you to make the wise decision and move forward with this full streetscape project. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donnie McColl, and I live at 165 Maple Street, and so I'm a town resident, county resident. The, some of the questions that have come up, and, you know, I know that Brian has, and Ricky and others have had a lot of, a lot of work to have to do to try to make the 3.5 work, to make the 4.7 work, to make the 5.5 work, and that kind of thing. And so certainly not like Obamacare and saying, you know, just pass it and we'll see what's in it later. But I think some of the questions that are trying to be raised that are, you know, well, we don't know what's going to happen, we don't know what you have yet, are, if we know that the town and the county are committed together to this project, then that's where they can solidify a lot of the things that are necessary. George brought up the point about volunteers, or about donations and that kind of thing. Again, that is something, and Millie likes to throw that out as well, is there are, there are ways, and there is work to be done as soon as we get started here, to know that. Brian's going to continue looking for other sources of income. I think county residents and town residents together will look to find ways to donate that. I've asked my brothers, I've asked other people, I've asked people that don't live here anymore if they would throw in 100 bucks, or 50 bucks, or 1,000 bucks, or something like that. So there is effort going in that direction right now. However, we don't have a fund place to put that at the moment, so as soon as we know where we need to be, that fund place can be put together. I think that the effort that can go forward for people to ask for donations and buy a bench, or buy, you know, as Tony Shepherd said today, it's cost $15 for a cubic yard of pavement. So, you know, buy a cubic yard of pavement every $15, or something like that. So I think it's also worth noting that the idea being that if additional funds do come in, that the county would end up being paid off first. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you're putting yourself on the hook for something you may not have to pay for. As you said, we're putting the town and the county together. It shows our elected officials in Raleigh that we are a community coming together, willing to do this for one another and with one another. And, you know, if $3 million pops up somehow out of a grant, then y'all get paid off, and the county gets, or the town mostly gets paid off as well, and we don't have to raise taxes nearly at all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Bob Reed. I'm a resident of High Meadows at 148 Cannon Street. I also have a home in Kernersville, North Carolina. In 2008 and 2009, I was president of the downtown council, and we went through a very similar process that you're going through right now, in that we closed North Main Street from the town square up to Railroad Street, about a four-block area. Tore up all the streets, did exactly what you're proposing to do here. And what made the whole project successful was the cooperation of the town, government, county commissioners. We got the DOT on board, all of the utility companies on board, and the town was able to raise the money through grants and do this very same project. A lot of businesses were very concerned being closed, or the street being closed for such a long period of time, because the amount of traffic that goes through North Main Street's incredible. We did not have one business close. The town worked very hard in making sure there was plenty of parking available during the process. We redid all of the sidewalks. When it opened in October, I believe it was 2010, it's amazing what has occurred, and you just think back at that time period of what the economy was like. But it was a very successful project. I encourage you to come together to do this. My wife and I have been coming to Allegheny County for a long time, and the hardware store, every time I come up here, I used to go and come... My wife and I have been coming to Allegheny County for a long time, and the hardware store, every time I, I come up here, I used to go, come uptown and go there, and a gentleman that I worked with years ago, and I'm sure a lot of you know him, George Collins, who was president of Northwestern Bank, I'd go in there and see Mr. Collins, and, and I love coming to town here. I mean, we come every weekend. I just retired. We plan on spending a lot of time here. We love this community, we love the people here. I just encourage you to, to get together and work this out. Like Ricky, I've known Ricky a long time, and, and I pledge to him, and I pledge to all of y'all here, that whatever I can do to help, I will do it. I believe in something like this, because I see the economic benefits of working for afterwards. Thank you very much for your time.
That is very, very interesting, certainly. What, in 2008 and '09, what was the property value of the town of Kernersville and the population?
Population within the city limits of the town of Kernersville at that time was probably, I'm going to say within, probably around 20,000, 18,000 to 20,000. Property values had gone down drastically due to the economy at the time. I do not have the specific numbers.
Ballpark.
Oh, Lord.
2 million, 8 million, 12 million, 50 million?
Total, what, property value?
Total property value.
Within the town?
Within the town of Kernersville.
Oh, Lord have mercy. I'm sorry, I can't answer that, but I, you know...
Please be quiet, please.
Well, I was just curious, because Kernersville, you say Winston, and then you say Kernersville's kind of here, but certainly still...
Kernersville is, is within the center between Winston, Greensboro, and High Point. Right now, within the town-city limits, the population is probably 28,000.
Right.
Property values have obviously increased. One thing that was a result of the project, what, what occurred just on North Main Street, because of the growth in the population, because of increased tax base with businesses coming to town, we were able to continue the improvements on Mountain Street with all-new sidewalks, on Mountain and on South Main Street.
And I'm guessing you had an economic recruitment person, or committee, or someone working on the construction?
We, we had very strong cooperation between the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Council, our city government. I actually serve on the Economic Development and Advisory Committee for the Chamber of You know, we, we don't actually go out and try to recruit people. What we do is, through the chamber, through our local Realtors, through the town, through the commissioners, when we find, find out about companies looking to come to Kernersville, we try to get with those people, talk to them, explain all the benefits, do all the things that we can do to help them come to our community. It takes an unbelievable effort between a lot of people.
Thank you, thank you. Now, to be fair to everybody, so I don't miss everybody, we've had a couple for, is there anybody that is against, that would like to come up to the podium at this time? If, if there's anybody that's against, I just want to be fair to let everybody have a balance here. Again, this is just to balance it out, to make sure everybody gets to talk.
My name is Nancy Wilson. My husband and I have owned property since we were 18 years old here in this county, and continue to buy property adjoining to us. We are against this for many reasons. First of all, I think it's a beautiful, beautiful thing that the town wants to do. It's, it's just really pretty. But as a county taxpayer, I'm just not for it. I don't know how it's going to bring jobs to the community, as it says. We don't have the, the closeness of all the interstates, as With Bill has the interstates here, in the, in their counties. I'm afraid that if you think it's going to bring more people to the county, it's going to ruin our county. It's a beautiful county, just as Millie Richardson says. We have beautiful rivers. I think it's going to look like Boone, rooftops, just one after the other, if we continue to bring people into the county. Also, bringing more people in the county, we're going to have more crime. I come from an area where my sister was murdered, north of Baltimore, still unsolved. There's just things that, little things that we should think about. With wanting to do this, it's very pretty, but I think the people of Sparta should pay for it. Thank you.
One in the back, right there, that's Scott.
My name's Scott Smith, 446 Hickory View Drive. One thing that, that I think we need to bring to the table is, we're just now starting a two-block project. And Brian, I think it's amazing that in, with one week, that you've raised another 900-some thousand dollars. This project started, and we've had many downfalls from 2015. It almost doubled in cost. And then we were faced with having to ask y'all for a million four, and now we're down to 400-some thousand. I mean, what worries me at my age, and it may not affect some of you in this room, but we're just now wanting to do two blocks. We have a whole town. And ma'am, as far as your comments, we are a long ways away from crime and different people and getting into that point. You know, we're, we're just trying to get our streets to where we don't have to go a foot into a pothole and remove the asphalt. You know, we are, my daughter, she just started driving, and we went into a pothole, wham! I said, "It's okay, baby, it's just, it's not all your fault," you know? It's, it's a years and years of asphalt buildup, and we're going to try to fix that. But the reason I'm up here is to say, this is a small proportion of money compared to what we were asking for, but you've got to consider, we've got a whole town to build. I mean, the properties I own, we're not even touched yet, and that's okay, but I look forward to the future. So, I, I believe that we all need to get a good mindset off of this, and we've got plenty of involvement. We just need to project to people to know that this is just the first step of getting to where we're wanting to get to. So, we, I appreciate everybody coming, but the money, we have to spend money and be engaged the way we are now to make this work, and, and I'm glad that you've brought this deficit down, you know, 900-some thousand. I mean, that's wonderful.
Before, before we go any further, I want to make mention of this, that in our meeting that we had several meetings ago, we made a comment, and we promised that we would turn over every leaf possible, did we not? And our, and during this process, the entire time was to not come to the county until it was a last resort. So, that's where we're at, okay? That's why we're here. Now, we have done, Brian has done, a magnificent job of going out there and finding grant money and finding these things, and I, we pledged that, we promised that, and I believe that we have lived up to our promises. And we're going to continue to live up to our promises, and we still have some other stuff that we're looking at. So, that, that's why, the question was asked to me, "Why haven't y'all give this to the county before?" I'm giving you the reason why we didn't come to the county now, okay? We were still trying to find it, every means possible. Now, we're here. Is anybody else back in the back? Wait.
I have some property in the county and in the town, so I have a double interest in all of this. I hope that everybody here has listened very carefully to what has been said. There's never been one shred of evidence to show that any of this is going to come to fruition as far as bringing together and doing the things that they said would come of this after it's all said and done and constructed. I appreciate the questions that was brought up here, which shows the lack of planning, or at least the presentation of what was going on when the questions up here were asked. The, there was an old congressman back many years ago in this county, Bob Doughton. He said, "You can shear a sheep once a year and get a crop. You kill that sheep, you eat it, you don't get the crop the next year." I don't know what the problem is about taxes. It seems to me that the county, and city too, to a certain extent, or the town, has some type of a mentality that is, if we've got one debt paid off, we've got to go in debt again. We can't let it just right there. We did it before, we're going to do it again. The things that are going on now in construction, I worked in construction jobs in my earlier life, and the times I worked in the government with contracts and grants, one of the things was construction contracts. The thing here that I see, I don't have all the information, because it wasn't presented as to what it was going to cost ultimately. But if you think that this is going to come in on the dollars that's presented for what information I have seen, I've looked closely at everything that's been presented, and I've looked closely at the video. I didn't attend the town meeting, but I looked closely at the video. And if you listen to what has been said here, there's none of them that has come up with a guarantee. It's a possible maybe. And I can't live off of possible maybes. What we need to do is come up with something that is definitive, that can be presented to the people, to decide whether we want to go with this and pay more taxes. I guarantee you're going to pay more taxes. If this project comes in anywhere near what they have put the figures out today, I'll be really surprised, because changed conditions in construction, especially the, what you're going under the street there to do all that excavating and then to put back in, I guarantee you, it's going to be a cost overrun for what you're estimating now. If you come in with anything less than twice of what you've put out now, it's going to be a miracle. You can't do it. There's no problem. I know that. So, what we need to do is, I think there's a lack of planning or presentation of what has been presented here. Maybe you have the information, but you haven't given it to us. And no one has guaranteed that it's going to come under anything. In fact, some of the people say here on this presentation, they guarantee it's not. Now, you're putting it together, and you say the project's not going to do what it's said, it's said to be done. That, that's, for the planners and developers of this, they should be positive and give us positive information, not a maybe that it might be. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Horace.
Barbara Halsey, and I live at 1740 Halsey Nobro. And I believe in starting with the visual, and I retired in 2011 from teaching, and since that time, I think I can look at all of you in this room and tell you that I have worked myself to death trying to make Sparta be the best it can be. And this streetscape was given to me, and this was 2012, and it's 2019. It is time that we do this. I pledged that night, when Mr. Brown spoke at the Methodist Church, that I would take on the task of getting street lamps, benches, trees, flowers, whatever we decide to do. And after that meeting, I cannot tell you how many people came up to me and said, "I'll give it to you, I'll give it to you." And I will pledge right now that I will take charge of that $39,000, and I will raise the money to do that. I also did not have time to go and ask individually all of these people, so I targeted people, but I have letters of support from several different people in this community. The Blue Ridge Book Club, Sparta Lines Club, the Rotary Club, Christ Episcopal Church, the yoga class at the Wellness Center, individual letters from town residents, the Sparta Amateur Radio Club, the Allegheny Arts Council, the Allegheny County Attorneys, the Allegheny County Library Board, county residents in support, and the JAM Board. And I give these to you tonight, Mike James. Thank you.
Hang on just a second. Hang on just a second.
Ms. Barbara, there's no doubt in anybody's minds you've worked diligently, 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 and taken on the 39K, that's exceptionally great. And we discussed at the Wednesday meeting on the 27th, when Mr. Brown made his presentation, and I said, "You know, you've got your core investors, your core contributors right here, take down their names, so you're putting that, you know, to another level." It's also based on, we've been talking about real estate values and so forth, and, and you do have your bed and breakfast up for sale, correct?
I do. So, I can retire and help the county and town more.
Well, so, and I, I get that, but so, so are you, are you saying then, basically, when that takes place, and hopefully in a timely manner, that you do intend to invest some or all that money downtown?
Millie, I promise you that I shop locally, and I will continue to do that.
This is not a joke. I mean, we're talking about business. And, and she's dedicated all this time, she's put all this effort, she's out here beating the bush, beating the bush. So, one of the big things that's going to make this successful, it's been mentioned several times, is, is, you know, can the, can the local property owners, can the people that own the property do faceless, et cetera, et cetera? So, do you, do you, and I know you've had multiple businesses in your life, so when you can retire from the bed and breakfast, do you plan to have some sort of business here?
I plan to live my remaining days in Allegheny County and do everything that I can possibly do to make it the best it can be, Millie.
Chris Davis, 16, South Main Street, Sparta, North Carolina currently, and we're building a home at 762 Independence Road, Sparta. We own a commercial building in town, and we own property in the county. And thank you so much for this meeting tonight. We really appreciate it. My husband and I are in full support of the entire project being completed now. I bring to you, Mr. James, three sheets of signatures. It is a petition, and three sheets are from current local downtown businesses, Allegheny Arts and Crafts people, and Books and Friends people. And they've all signed these in support of the project in its entirety now.
Mindy Hall, I live at 206 Eastern Air Lane, Sparta. The, I represent Allegheny County on the MOS Board of the High Country Association of Realtors, and on April 4th, we had our annual town hall, and at that time, streetscape was discussed. We brought it up so we could address the, the people that we will benefit from improvement. It's, it's not a secret. When you improve Allegheny County, that helps us a great deal, because before we can sell a house in Allegheny County, we've got to sell the county itself. People don't know a lot about Allegheny County. So, one of the first things we do is, we take them downtown, and we only have one downtown. So, we go downtown, we go to the Wellness Center, we try to see the river, a couple of, Little River, the New River, the golf courses. We talk about the library and the great fiber optic internet that we have, that people can work from home. So, we have a lot of benefits. The Realtors at that meeting, 87% of the Realtors at that meeting, signed this letter asking you to please support the town and coordinate with them in completing the full streetscape project at this time. I have their signatures, and I'll give that to you, Mr. James, as well. The, the other aspects of the county and the community that are important to, to us in helping sell is the hospital, the fact that we have a very safe community to live in, and value. And you all are a big part of that. Now, being the cheapest thing is not the best value, but having the best bang for your buck. So, and... So, and again, like everybody said, you do a great job of stretching those dollars, and that's very important. But appearance is, is the first thing people see. That's, that's what, you know, a lot of times their first reaction is, what does it look like when we come into town and you've passed ordinances that address that? And that's, thank you for that. The downtown streetscape project is a big curb appeal project. Every real estate transaction impacts at least three people. Up to eight different people get a job from one real estate transaction. So, when you're talking about jobs, yes, if we can sell more real estate, more jobs are generated from every sale. So, it will help us tremendously there. When we go to sell a house, we ask them to address their curb appeal, take care of your infrastructure, make sure everything's sound. It generates a much quicker sale. You invested heavily and authentically Allegheny to sell Allegheny County? Well, we gotta work on our curb appeal as well. It's, it's a good project. There is no guarantee, but you are not gonna sell a house if you don't take care of, of the water lines and the curb appeal. So, from a real estate perspective, we ask that you please go forward with the full scope of the project for streetscape.
How many, how many of our, and I understand from talking to real estate folks, that we were forcibly merged with Boone?
Yeah.
Right? Which is, okay. So, and back, back, say, 2010, there was like 80, 90 Realtors in the county. Of course, the development boom was booming, because it was artificial, and it was, you know, and it blew up, and all, everybody knows that. So, we now have approximately 40 Realtors?
Yes.
Okay. And you, you all have to work with the folks in Boone. You weren't given any choice, correct?
We were given a choice. We could scale way back, or, and really not exist, or we could go forward and come into the 21st century.
So, they're, they're saying they're all for it, but?
Now, this is just the Allegheny real estate agents. This was just for Allegheny County.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I was a bit curious if Boone's, all those folks were for it, then we certainly could get them up for donations too. Because they've got it.
They're coming. They're coming, and they come to Allegheny County a lot. They know that we have a good value here, because they can't, they don't have the prices that we have.
Well, that's what I was saying to Mr. Brown. We've got, we've got an affordable place to retire, an affordable place for summer homes, an affordable place for, for folks that wanna bring their families here. And yeah, I was, I was kinda picking at you to get, get to that, that, yeah. And that just reinforces what I've said.
But our inventory is low.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's the first I've heard of that.
My name is Vicky Palier. I live at 207 Duncan Street, and we have a couple of properties in town. Everyone's been talking about the future, but I wanna talk to you about the past. I don't know how many of you were here 20 years ago, and remember what our downtown looked like 20 years ago. Well, I was. Bristol Compressors had, was leaving, or just had left, and we had so many storefronts empty. We had, the SRC was trying their best. We got out, we put out benches, we put out flowers. There were four individuals that hung flags downtown that the kids had made at school, just to try to make our town look less empty. And I've seen so much change over the last 20 years. My kids came back to live here and work and raise families here. I couldn't believe it, because they moved away and came back. So, I'm here to encourage you folks to think about the future, think about your children, your grandchildren, and what they have to look forward to in Allegheny County and Sparta as our town seat. I don't know if any of you have ever been through Chadbourne, North Carolina, going to the beach, but they're boarded up. They're so pitiful that I wanna move there myself and help them. I mean, really. And so, I just, I'm for the streetscape and for the total streetscape, because I really feel like that it will help our, our future. Thank you.
I, for one, don't wanna see towns boarded up by any means, and I'm not going to. I have one more in the back right here, and then, how many more would like to speak? Well, show of hands, just to give us an idea? Now, if you're gonna say the same thing, we don't wanna hear it. If you wanna agree with somebody, that's fine, for the constraints of time. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Mark Tysinger. I'm from Lexington, North Carolina. We're new here. We moved here in December because we thought it was pretty. And no other reason, we just thought it was pretty. And we bought the property, Ron and Chris Davis's place, and then we said, "We better go look at Sparta and see what it looks like." And that's, it was kind of a total leap of faith. Now, I told you all that to tell you this. I was in the military, and I've been self-employed for over 30 years. I do plan on opening a business here. As soon as our property closes, hopefully here in May, I'll be spending some money, and we'll be doing something. Now, from the military, and the mayor knows this as well, we were taught number one survival skills. You change, you adapt, you survive. Change, adapt, survive. Overcome, that's right. Being self-employed, I can tell you business rule very simply, if you're not moving forward, you're moving backward. That's been said. Very quickly, I'll tell you a tale of two cities, Lexington, North Carolina, and Thomasville, North Carolina. Both were boom towns, factory towns, furniture factory, cotton mills. Does that sound familiar? And then came the 1990s, and Bill Clinton and NAFTA, and everything moved out, plants closed up. Right now, Lexington Home Brands has a retail storefront, and Bob Timberlake Furniture is the only furniture company left in Lexington. Lexington lost 20,000 jobs. 20,000 jobs. So, here's what Lexington did. Lexington, number one, the Chamber of Commerce did a campaign to convince people, or help people better understand the need to buy local. It helps taxes, it helps sales tax, it helps in every way. Builds confidence in the community. The second thing they did, they got the county and the city to understand that they needed to work together. Because let's face it, I live in the county, 554 Bear Creek Lane, I forgot to say that. But I come to Sparta to spend money. Sparta can't exist without the county, the county can't exist without Sparta. We have to work together. The other thing that Lexington did is they hired an economic advisor, who became economic director, a man named Steve Gooch. His sole job was to recruit businesses, and he said, "Never again will I recruit big businesses." He shifted the focus to service-related businesses and small businesses. And over a period of about 15 years, he recruited basically small businesses. And in that 15 years, he created 25,000 jobs for Lexington. On the day he retired in 2017... Now, I can say this, on the day he retired in 2017, he signed a $700 million deal with the company to come there that was gonna create 700 jobs. The next thing that they did, they shopped local, they hired an economic advisor to recruit companies, and then they had a committee that got together back in the 90s, and they said, "What do we do best, other than furniture?" And of course, barbecue was the answer. They created the Barbecue Festival. First couple of years, it was just a couple thousand people. Now, they have over 100,000 people that come there. I don't think Sparta needs to do that. However, what do you guys do best up here? What I see, and this is just from a new perspective, there's certainly the New River, hunting, fishing, hiking, stuff like that. But the biggest thing I see when I look around in the county are Christmas trees. So, my suggestion would be, maybe somebody should start a Christmas tree festival, the weekend right after Thanksgiving. That would give the town a boom, it would set everybody up for the winter by having a good Christmas, financially, economically. Things like that create jobs. When I came here, I went to the Chamber of Commerce and asked, "What do you guys need?" And everybody said something for the youth. And very simply, I tell you this, if you want the youth to stay here, if that's a problem, because Lexington had that problem, you have to give them a hope and a future. And that's what Lexington's done. The other tale, the other city is Thomasville, North Carolina. Thomasville didn't do any of this.
Got to go.
And now their downtown's abandoned, they have drug problems, homeless problems, all kind of problems. Yes, ma'am?
Yep, gotta go, yep. Just on fairness of time.
And I'm done, I'm done.
Oh, I want you to stand right there.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
It's, it's interesting that you would meet, mention Mr. Gooch.
Yep.
Myself and Marshall Wagner, a large property owner downtown, met with him for two hours a week ago Saturday.
Okay.
And we had approached him in times past, and he said, "Well, you know, someone called, and they said they didn't really need him." And I said, "Well, we need you now." What he said was exactly what, what you, what you're saying. He said, "When, when I came to Lexington, they wanted a wine and cheese." And he said, "I saw that we had all these people that were at their machines at 7:00 in the morning, ready to work. They were there. We had this amazing workforce that..." Okay, you say you created 25,000 jobs. He said, "We had that." He said, "I started going to Raleigh every month and took donuts to everybody. And they knew, they didn't know my name, but they knew I was from Lexington." And he said, so I said, "Well, Steve, I, I'm, this is what we're looking at doing. We're trying to go boldly where no town's gone before in Allegheny." And his exact words to me were, "You cannot have success if you have renovation without recruitment." And he said, "You people have got to have that working in conjunction, or this investment will not pay off as you've been led to believe." I said, "Steve, I appreciate it." I said, "Now, what would you do, just here in Sparta, what would you do? You know, what, what would you look at?" He said, "You have an amazing uniqueness to build upon. He said, "You've got talent, you've got music." He says, "We've been to the Jubilee, we love the Jubilee." He says, "You've got an amazing amount of talent, you've got artisans, of course, you've got the beauty, nobody, you know, denies that. You've got wonderful opportunities." He said, "But for you all to flourish as a community, you cannot overlook what makes you unique." Because, as he told the people in Lexington, "If you're shooting for a wine and cheese," and that was his term, and I think everybody in this room gets what we're saying, "If you're shooting for a wine and cheese downtown in Sparta," he says, "You ain't gonna make it." And that, I was gonna present this later, but since you brought him up, he's a fantastic gentleman, he loves it here, he's, was happy to sit there and talk to us for two hours, and he is a success story, in my understanding, unequaled in the state of North Carolina over the past 20 years. So, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a comment, a concern. We are actually at public, taking public comments. Is this a public comment, or is this a Millie Richardson? Fine.
Are we, are we not allowed to ask people questions when they come before us? And in the town council meetings, when people come before us, we're allowed to ask questions. So, am I?
And have conversations going on and on. I think we should try to really, we have a lot of folks here.
Well, I was basically just reiterating what he said, that Mr. Gooch had shared information with us.
Please be quiet.
I, I just encourage us to, to respect the people's time that are here, and let's try to hear them out. And then if we wanna go back to them on our own time and talk to them, I think that should be okay.
I think Karen has over here, did you wanna say something, Karen?
Thank you again for everything that, that the 10, excuse me, board members are doing. I appreciate it. And our, here, I'm Karen Lees, I'm president of the Sparta Revitalization Committee, and I'm representing that community right now. And we formally voted to support the 4.9 million full streetscape project. And we feel that the sooner that the construction work can commence, the faster the long-term vitality can begin. And I'm gonna comment on something Millie said. I think we've been needing an Economic Development Officer for this county for a long time. That would be a very big step in conjunction with the streetscape. That'd be great. And Steve Gooch, oh, if we could get him on our team, we would be, it would be a miracle. And I wanna say, it was a godsend to get this $961,000, Brian. That's a sign. That's a sign. We've got to have faith and go forward. I hope you gentlemen and, and Millie will, will take this as, as a big step of faith and approve it.
Judge, if you'd like to go, how many more would like to talk? One, two, three, four, five?
The only thing I wanna say is that I wanna say that, I couldn't say it any better than Ricky said. I'm in total support of what he says. I hope both the county and the town. I said, you know, I can't say it any better. I'm, I'm just gonna say that I'm in support of everything that Ricky Brown said. I'm, I'm, you know, a lot of things you gotta take on faith. I mean, you know, I think we're all religious people, you know, we take that on faith. You're gonna have to take it on faith that this is gonna improve our county and our town. I would very much hope that our county commissioners and our town board will approve this. The only thing that I would ask, with the permission of the chairman and the mayor, can I just ask, who here is in favor of this project? Will have them stand?
How about a show of hands? It'd be easier to say a show of hands.
Show of hands, stand, whatever. Thank you.
I'm John Kilmartin, I live at 371 Harold Road in Whitehead Community. Part owner of a, of a business in Allegheny County, in Sparta, the Allegheny Inn. I've got some great partners that built that hotel many years ago. I wanna thank you for letting this meeting take place tonight. You've got a difficult decision, and I hope you know that I am here in favor for it. I have a letter from the county, I'm from the Chamber of Commerce, we have voted to be in favor for it. I'll give that to Michael, Mike, in just a few minutes. I'm not gonna speak to that, I wanna speak to the Allegheny Inn. And we are constantly challenged with attracting business to come and stay at the hotel. It's ironic that this is happening this week, in a good way. If you'll drive through our parking lot this Friday or Saturday night, you'll see between 50 and 75 BMW motorcycles that are coming in from Canada, from California. It's an annual ride they do. We've been talking to them for years. We didn't have all the parts for them to come here. Brad, Brad opened up Laconia Ale Works last year. That, between Muddy Creek and the Pizzeria and Tap House, those filled in the, the parts they needed to make the decision to stay. That's 75 people on average per day. That's maybe two meals a day, that's gas, that's in April. Normally, we don't have any kind of business like that in April. And I just wanna add that every little part makes it easier for me to bring in groups like that. And a lot of times, we get groups like that, and one or two of them down the road become residents here. More importantly, it allows me to work my staff more. It lets the wintertime folks that are getting maybe part-time hours to get full-time hours in April when they normally wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Robin Cader, and I live on Antioch Church Road, and I have two businesses in Sparta. But there's just two things I wanna say, 'cause I know there's division, and there always is when there's something big like this that we're trying to make happen. One is, the business that Robin, and my husband Daniel and I have, we, we've been there for five years, and we've been embraced by the community, not just the town, but the county and everyone that comes into it. So, I thank you all for that. But we're also very excited that we're putting some money into the upstairs, and so we're expanding. And I know there are other people in town that have businesses that are expanding. I know Garrison's doing some things, and, you know, there's just a lot of commitment by a lot of business owners in this town. And I know that the streetscape is something that's, they've been excited about, and that's one of the reasons why they have invested. So, you know, and it's not just the town, it's the whole community that comes in and enjoys all these places. And last thing, when I come home, the first thing I see that makes me happy that I'm home is when I cross the county line and I see Allegheny County. I'm home. I'm home. It's not...that's the mark, that just makes me feel that I'm happy to be back up on the mountain, and it's the county. So, thank you.
Marshall, did you have something? Garrison?
Carolyn Pruitt, born here, raised here, lived here most of my life, proud to be a resident of 48 Hospital Road. I cannot guarantee that if I strike a match, that I'm gonna light this lantern. But what I will tell you is this, our forefathers did us a great favor when they invented this electricity. So, do I like change? Can I read by the light of this lantern? Yes, I can. But I enjoy flipping that light on and seeing a whole room light up. So, I would like to see this streetscape to go forward. I know that Brian has worked tenaciously on trying to see this come to head. But also, the people of this county, I've talked to many myself, Millie, and I can name names, and they would love to see things happen in our community. They like to come to town, they love to see when the SRC plants flowers. Now, is it a small stroke in what we can do? Absolutely. And I don't believe that we need to fix things when they become broken. I think that this 80-year-old system we have beneath the ground does need to be fixed. But I also believe, as a future soon-to-be business owner, again, on Main Street, that we need to continue to improve. I too was here growing up, and I know that we had things in town, that we enjoyed the movie theater, we enjoyed the dry-pee-in, we enjoyed a sock hop at the skating rink, okay? We had a lot of things going on, but you know what? We had people that continued to improve on things in our community, too. Allegheny County is not just a council or a commissioner. If you do not see us as a whole, then we cannot move forward. We are a whole group of people. I love this community, and I will continue to love it, and I, along with Barbara Halsey, will donate time. I will dig the holes for the trees myself, and I have done so in this community. When my husband and I put that mural on that wall coming into town with those sunflowers on it, we did not do that for us. We did that for this community. I don't think there's anybody in here... I don't think there's anybody in here that doesn't enjoy that mural or is not proud of it. Can we move forward? If you are a store owner or a business owner in this community, then fix your storefront up, okay? Beautify what we have. We can only move forward. Thank you.
Dwayne, did you want to speak too? You go after Garrison, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody coming out tonight to support this streetscape project. My name is Garrison Wagner. I own a business at 38 South Main Street. Moved back here to Allegheny County when I was 23-years-old. And, you know, we kind of came together over this past couple of weeks, trying to gather a bunch of support from our local restaurants here. I've got a signed letter here from eight of our local restaurants, just showing that we support the full streetscape project in its entirety. Just one thing I'd like to note on, really quick, it was mentioned earlier that success doesn't happen without recruitment, but the good thing here in our case is that a lot of the recruitment has already been done. You know, Touch of Grace opened up three or four months before I came here. I came here 2018. Muddy Creek Cafe came here 2018. Laconia is here now. We don't have to recruit those people, they're already here. Now is the time to finish the project and do it right. We really ask that you'd get behind us and show your support.
I live at 471 Riveron Lane in Allegheny Manor, and have been a resident of Allegheny County since 1976. The first paper that I put in front of the county commissioners is a result of a poll on the Facebook page, "What's Happening in Allegheny County?", which has over 5,200 members. And as you can see, the support is five to one in favor of the project. One thing I want to explain, because this question had come up about that poll, we've been asked, can people vote over and over again? And you cannot on that poll. When you click your vote one time, there's a checkmark goes in the box. If you click it again, the checkmark goes away and your count goes away. And also, if you go to that poll and click on the number of the people that voted and supported the streetscape project, a box will come up, and you can scroll down and look at every single one of these 242 people, and the same on the people who are against it. So, it's very transparent. The second paper that I put in front of the commissioners is a page from the U.S. Census Bureau website. Where down at the bottom, it shows that the population of Allegheny County in 2010, according to census, was 11,155 residents. And if you go across there, we lost population from 2017 all the way through 2015. Finally, in 2016, our population has started to rise and did not reach the same level as our population in 2010 until mid-year 2018. So, there's one of the fears I've heard expressed about this project is that we don't want Allegheny County to turn into Boone, or Asheville, or Mooresville, three of the places I've heard. We're not trying to turn Allegheny into anything but Allegheny County. We're not trying to turn Sparta into anything but Sparta. But we are within 18 to 24 months of the next recession, in my opinion, and we're not ready for it. We need to move forward with this project. So, I did want to share those numbers with the commissioners. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? Front row?
I just wanted to add one thing to my comments, a couple of things.
You've already had your time, Chris, at the podium, so you've already had your time. Let's let everybody else go speak.
My name is Linda Carpenter, and I did not plan to do this. I don't like public speaking, but I recently moved to 137 Grandview Drive, and I'm delighted to be in town. I have neighbors. At the risk of getting laughed out of the room, I'm gonna share my pet fantasy for this Anyone who knows me, I was raised in Latin America, Puerto Rico, and I've lived in Europe. And Sparta has...Sparta's beautiful, I love Sparta, but it has precious little public space. My fantasy is for the town to somehow, this is the longest of long shots, acquire Farmer's Parking Lot and create a public plaza with a fountain, trees, benches, maybe coffee gazebo, maybe a ban shelf. It would increase foot traffic along Main Street immeasurably. People like to be seen, I think I just said that. And it creates community, and it would just be a win-win for Main Street and for the That's about it. I just think it'd be a beautiful thing, and I know there's one person standing in the way, mostly, but I think a public space on Main Street...
Let's kind of be respectful with...she's entitled to her opinion, as I am and as you are, and we will continue to be respectful there.
Thank you.
That's the part of getting together on a project here, so... Rocky, is there anybody else that wants to speak opposed to the county's involvement with the streetscape?
Rocky, I think you might as well stay up there.
Or for it.
The reason I think it piggybacks with the streetscape is because of the fountain, a water feature, since you're gonna do the plumbing anyway. That's why I think it would be a good point.
Rocky Profit will be our last speaker of the public comments.
Good evening. My name is Rocky Profit. I'm the founder and owner of Napco here in Sparta, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. In the early 1980s, Napco was manufacturing board games for two Magnavox video games right here in this very basement. I made the decision to invest $90,000 in our first highly automated equipment, even though interest rates were very high. A little over a year later, Magnavox got poor reviews on their games, and those games were discontinued. It was a daunting time, and the company was paying over 20% interest on that equipment loan. But in 1983, Trivial Pursuit came along, and we started manufacturing game boards for the U.S. and Europe. It lasted for four years. And that investment made it possible for Napco to capture that opportunity and resulted in buying more equipment and to build a building on Napco Road, which Johnny Wishon now operates his business out of. In 2005, Napco bought and renovated the old Haynes Building. Without that investment, I can say with certainty that Napco would not have made it out of this basement. A lot has been said about the Bristol compressor investment several years ago, and I would like to give you a few highlights of that. As of August 2018, Bristol Compressors closed permanently, and the loss of 470 jobs left a gaping hole in Bristol, Virginia's economy. Let's contrast that with where our community is as a result of that investment. We continue to benefit from the 21 North Road improvements. Sparta received $1 million to upgrade the sewer system. Blue Ridge Electric built a second substation, giving us a redundant power source in bad weather. The town and county are continuing to receive tax dollars on the investment. Bottomly's is now occupying the old Bristol building and thriving. Last Friday, while traveling, I picked up a copy of the USA Today, and one of the featured stories was about The Field of Dreams. The front-page quote said, "It is still a homer today, 30 years later. Today, that movie inspires because it taps into the human spirit of hope. I support the streetscape project, and let's take advantage of this golden opportunity." Thank you.
This time, we will close our public comments. Commissioner Mark Evans has something he'd like to read, and then Mike James has a presentation that he's gonna show.
This is from Brantley Price, the town manager over...
...success in economic development, because you're never standing still. You're either moving forward, or you're moving back. The only thing that's constant in this world is change, is constantly changing. And so, and the same's true in economic development, is that we continue to see reinvestment into the communities by the local government authorities, and it's paying off. It's paying off through the activity that they're seeing through reinvestment dollars. And again, if we can broaden the tax base, then that relieves the pressure on the local taxpayer. If we can increase the business communities, redevelopment dollars, increase the development dollars in general, that helps the local taxpayer. And so, to this gentleman's comments a few minutes ago, that's great, he sold 10 houses. That's what you want to see, is reinvestment into the local community from private and public sectors. So, I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Mike, for that presentation. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Chairman Evans to have his general discussion among the county commissioners.
Thank you, Wes. I just thank everybody for coming out and for sharing, for whatever side you're on. And we're gonna open it up to our board, and we're gonna try to have a conversation here in what questions you have, or comments. Start with Commissioner John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. This is a challenge that has been placed on the county that if you'd have spoken with me 10 days ago, I would have told you that it was frankly impossible. The change was the $962,000 grant that came through. Not because I don't want to see Sparta turn into what it was at one time whenever I was young. Three new car dealerships, you couldn't find a parking place on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. Everybody in town spending money. We had a theater, we had a lot of things going on in this town. But as a county commissioner, I've got to look at a bigger picture. During the sheriff's report, he told us that his calls were up 20%. His arrests have increased by 50%. Drug cases increased by 52%. Civil papers being served, 14%. Involuntary commitments, 27% increase. 19% increase on investigated cases. We've got problems in this county. Collecting taxes on overpriced hamburgers, cocktails, beer, and a glass of wine is not going to solve that. To me, whenever you came and you said that you needed $1.4 million, that was an unfair burden. At the present time, after we have authorized the county manager to begin looking at a loan of $920,000, we still face a $2.4 million-plus budget deficit from our income in this county. We will start working on the budget shortly. Our sheriff department is understaffed, the jail is understaffed, we budgeted last year for 29 foster children. The last that I heard, we had 47. We have five foster families in this county. We have foster children from the east coast of North and South Carolina to Picken, South Carolina. These are the challenges that we as commissioners face. Now, in the last 10 years, the average age of the citizen in Allegheny County has risen from 45.9 to 49.2 years. We're getting older, mainly because our youth leave. They leave so that they can make a living. I left. The median household income in 2017 was $38,994, 29.2% lower than the state average, and 48% lower than the national average. We're a poor community. Civitas rates, Allegheny County is the fourth most efficiently-run county in the state of North Carolina. When the present county commissioners came on board, we were faced with many challenges. We have started investing in this county, and we have tried to bring the county into the 21st century. We've had to raise taxes. We are on the cusp of bringing in a fire tax so that we can help our volunteer fire departments. 3 cents of the property tax in this county today goes to the volunteer fire department so that we can help them. But that is a voluntary thing, it is a line item, and we're gonna shift it, I believe, and I hope, and I pray to the good Lord, that we will shift it to a property... good Lord, that we will shift it to a property tax, because with a property tax, they are insured of getting those monies. As a line item, if we have to build a courthouse, or we have a, something like this comes up, if this project falls through, and the town has to come to us, and we have to borrow, those volunteer fire departments may not receive that money. This is the challenges that we have to look you in the eye and tell you that we face every And it does not get less. We have been told that we will be increasing our contribution to our employees' retirement funds between now and 2024 because it is underfunded. We've also been told by the state that the medical portion of our retirees is also underfunded. It's underfunded about, it's only funded about 45%, according to Dale Falwell at the Republican Party meeting that he spoke with us. So, we have continuing unfunded mandates that come upon us. Now, I'm gonna tell you, ladies and gentlemen, my fellow citizens, I love this county. I love this town. I grew up in it. I had to go away, and I was away for about 40 years. My family, on my mother's side, has been in this county since the 1700s. Those of you that have moved here, I've got graves all over this county of relatives. Do not question my loyalty or my commitment for this county to do the best that it can. I will vote with a caveat in support of this, the $432,000. But, Mr. Chairman, I want a memorandum of understanding from the town that once this project is completed, that we have a letter from the project engineer, that it has been completed in accordance with current codes and meets the requirements that we have. This, yes, you're right, ladies and gentlemen. You came up here and you told us that we needed to look forward. This is a small price to pay on the county's part. You raise the funds, we're out of it. But this town is on the cusp. I can, in five minutes, I can go on Amazon, order anything I want, and get it delivered for no charge. How does a merchant in Sparta, North Carolina, compete? We are not going to expand. We are not going to come into the 21st future. We are not going to have a future for our children if we think that we can survive on overpriced hamburgers, fancy food, drinks. We have got to bring people in that will bring in small businesses because they are the life of the economy. And that commitment falls back on you, my fellow citizens. You have got to invest. We can't even get a quarter cent sales tax increase in this county to help us with the Yet we are just about burned in effigy if we decide we want to raise a penny of property tax. So, I will support this initiative. But you've got something that you've gotta do also out there. You give it its lift service, pull your wallet out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Larry?
How do you follow that? Got three minutes.
I too love this county. I'm not a native, but I've been here 17 years. I have hope. I have faith. I have been in support of this project ever since I've heard about it. I think it's the right thing. The county and the city need to work together. We're all in one. The county benefits from sales tax, but they benefit more from attracting new people to this county. We seriously look at the budgets, and when I ran for office, I said I was not gonna raise taxes, and that's something we don't want, any of us want to do. But if we want to keep the people we've got, if we want to keep the services we've got, we've got no choice. You're talking about guarantees. I guarantee you, if you don't do something, you're gonna pay more taxes, and that's a given, because we need revenue. Only way to get revenue is through tourists, which is a small amount, but get new residents. We don't want to be a boon. We don't want to be a blowing rock. We want to be a comfortable city, but we can't have it both ways, and we need to step up on this and do it the right way. That's it.
Bye.
A couple of, I'm not, three minutes, I'm gonna stay under. A couple of questions for Brian. I want to be clear that any additional grant money that the town receives comes off of what the county has proposed to give to you.
Bobby, the way we propose that now is that after the project is complete, because we may run into unforeseen circumstances. So, when the project is complete, and to Commissioner Irvin's, everything is certified by an engineer that we have satisfied all of the code requirements. If there is additional grant funds that have come to this project, our first priority is for that to go to the county.
And that'll be a legal document between both parties?
Yep. That's right.
Explain why we need to vote tonight.
We have to go before the local government commission. This project, as has been stated many times, has been going on since about 2012. We have put the Department of Transportation, they were supposed to resurface Main Street in 2016. They have been extremely cooperative with us and supportive of us to allow us to try to pull this project off so that we can get the waterline in the ground, and we can use the resurfacing funds that they have available. It's my opinion that they are close to the end of their rope. They will not continue. They are getting complaints daily, and some of us here are part of the ones that are saying this road is falling apart. They cannot continue to wait for us to get our house in order. They need to pave that road, and before they pave the road, we need to get the waterline in the ground.
Okay. Then, what I would like to say about the project is, I'm really not pleased the way that it came to the county commissioners, and a lot of people that I've talked to in the county ask why it took so long to come to the commissioners. To my point, I look back at my grandfather. He lived in the Twin Oaks community for years and years. Before that, he lived in Stratford. 1919, he took a gamble and started selling T models out of a garage on a dirt road, no pavement or anything. But he took that chance, that it would help him and it would help the community. He moved to Twin Oaks and built a nice hotel, restaurant, several other, it was a big dance studio there, and, but he also took the chance of installing the telephone system from Twin Oaks to town. Now, this is back in 1920, 1930, and people didn't have a lot of money, but he had a vision for the county, that everything he did would help him, but it would also help the county. For years, when we've had our joint meetings, I've always said, what's good for the county is good for the town, what's good for the town is good for the county. I think we're in this together. I may not like the way that it came to me, but I, I think in the long run, it'll be a good thing. That's it.
Commissioner Blaschke.
I too have lived here all my life, and I graduated in '71, and looking then to now, as some of the rest of you sitting across here is in business for yourselves, you took that gamble, and you took that start, and you made it work. And so did our forefathers when they started building Sparta. They didn't have all these consensuses and projects and all that stuff. They took it upon themselves, got their money together, and started building and put it together, and everybody got behind it and made it work, and that's what we need to do. We need to be positive, stay together, and stay focused, and try to make this thing work. This is no more than us remodeling our house or painting our, whatever, you know. It's putting a new face on Sparta, and it's, I think it's time for that to happen. And from the first meetings, when this thing got rekindled, I really felt that this 1.4 at that time could come from non-taxpayer money. We talked about that great lengths, and that's what you guys have done. You guys got busy, and have been blessed in the meantime to come up with all this money. And I'd like to see this thing happen and move forward, and, but there's no guarantees, certainly at all, but all indications are, it'll be a positive for our town and county. And it is a marriage. The town, the county, we get sales tax, and we need to be looking for more avenues than just property tax to raise revenues. That's our problem. And part of that's on the county population. You're not going to get Walmart here with 11,000 people, you know? So, we've got to look at better ways to come up with monies and revenues for our county to make everything work and be less of a burden on the taxpayers. I don't ever want to lose sight of the farming families in this county that started this county. Agriculture's what got it rocking way back in the day, and those folks, 10 or 20, 30 dollars may not seem too much to some of us, but it's a good bit to some of the others that come through that time period when there wasn't a lot of big money made, and I'd just like for us to remember and stay focused on those people and how we got from where we are. Big banks didn't get to where they're at by big depositors all through time, you know? And we just, we need to keep sight of those folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just a few quick comments. Ooh, Mike's kinda hot there. I agree, the challenges, and I know Mike and I have had several conversations, you know, would've liked to have gotten in the conversation earlier, but at the same time, I think that's a compliment on myself. I look at the town trying to do this on their own. They really had no intentions of coming to us. They thought they had everything worked out until they opened that bid, and then it sort of went south from there. And at that point, I commend them for, you know, going anywhere and trying to partner with anybody that's willing in the community, and what better partner than the county? You know, I think that now, the momentum is positive, and because of that, you've picked up the grant, and I believe there's potential for more to come. I think as we unite with this project, it will attract money from the state. I believe that. We'll realize it when we realize it. The ARC, I think, still has to sign on, and I think there's potentially more from what I've seen from where the 961 came from. It's a possibility. Of course, zero is a possibility too, so I'm willing to make the commitment at the 432. I think this will reinvest and attract, we need to attract money, we need to attract investors, and that will help the economy. The conversation with Brantley Price. I do have a condition, and we've kind of talked about trees and not talked about trees, and I will not be in favor of it with trees being planted in the ground. But now, I will compromise, Barbara. Potted is okay. The reason for the underground is gonna cost us down the road. It was mentioned here in public comment. So, I want to protect our investment. We want to stretch our dollars and make it nice that way. And that is the end of my comments.
Do you need a motion, sir?
Well, what we would be looking for, in my opinion, we're looking at a funding of 432. We would make a motion for a resolution of support, and 432,000, that could be reduced by any new monies that are realized from other sources once the project is complete.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, the 432 is the debt service over a 15-year period, so the commitment would be for $432,000. Yes, that's correct.
You are aware that we cannot not obligate future boards?
Yeah. Yeah.
And so, and if money comes in, if there's enough money that comes from other sources, that 432 could be paid up in advance?
That's true. Yes. That's correct.
Okay. So, that would be what I would entertain a motion for.
Motion of support? A resolution of support, sir?
I second that.
A motion and a second in support. All in favor, I would ask that you would make it known by raising your hand. Five of them.
At this time, we will open the floor up once again for any other public comments other than Streetscape. If, yes, we're coming, we're coming. Hang on, hang on. This doesn't have anything to do with Streetscape, right, Karen? You have a minute and a half, Karen. I please ask you to be quiet as you exit, please. Please still show respect. We're still holding a meeting.
Thank you very much, Wes. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to invite everyone, before you leave, listen to this, please. We have another tool in our pocket, possibly. We wanted to invite you to, the Thursday of this week at 6 o'clock right here in this building, Gene Reese from Mount Erie, a very successful entrepreneur, is coming to present a program about the success of Mount Erie and the federal and state tax credits. So, please come. It's Thursday, 6 o'clock, and the tax credit is subject to the renovation cost of a building, not the purchase of a building. So, it would be a great tool, right here, very timely. Hope you'll come and listen and learn.
Thank you. Anybody else for any other public comments? At this time, I'm gonna ask the town manager for his comments.
No other, Mr. Mayor, other than we need to recess this meeting this evening and reconvene next Monday at 5:00 p.m. to meet with USDA folks regarding the letter of conditions.
I'll do that at the end here. County manager, do you have anything?
A couple of things. I just want to say thanks to everybody that came out tonight, and everybody was on their best behavior. It was a very good meeting. I've been saying all week, these joint town and county meetings, we don't really do a lot of governing. Usually, it's a, we're honoring somebody's event or something like that, and we were gonna govern the heck out of it tonight, and that's what we've done. Also, want to say, last Monday, the 15th, was a very difficult day for the county employees. I want to thank a local citizen that wanted to remain anonymous that rented the Allegheny motion van so that all of my employees could go over to the funeral home in Independence. We appreciate that. And also, a lot of our county offices were closed two or three hours last Monday for that, and haven't had one complaint from anybody. All we've had is just words of condolences and words of support. Just want to appreciate all the citizens for that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, at this time, the town council now will offer up any comments, and I'll start with Councilman Jones on this end. Do you have any comments that you'd like to say?
I think it's time that we brag on the county for electing the five commissioners they've got seated. Man, I appreciate what they've done tonight. They know it's the right thing to do. They made that commitment, and want to applaud Brian Edwards for just, it's been unreal the work, the time, the effort, the contacts he's made for this project. I have no idea what all he's done. I just know it's been a lot, and thank you very much.
Councilman Brady, do you have anything?
I just want to echo what Chris said and tell the commissioners, we do appreciate it.
Councilman Palier.
It's me.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay. I appreciate what the commissioners done for us there tonight. This is gonna complete what we've been striving for, for probably around 20 years, ever since I've been on the council. I joined the council in 2001, and, you know, I'm ready to start digging. So, let's go for it.
Councilman McGrady.
I'm good. I think everything's been said, doesn't have anything else to say, I don't think.
Councilwoman Miller Rich.
Just a couple of quick questions, but I want...
Just a couple of quick questions, but I want anybody in this room, right now, that doesn't want to hear what I have to say, to please, by all means, you have my permission to get up and walk out the door, and I won't be offended in the least. I was called down for taking up too much time, but I was elected to ask questions and be skeptical and be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. Now, I'm going to give you a couple of seconds here for anybody who wants to get up and walk out, and I won't be offended, because I believe everybody ought to have a right to their own opinion. And I don't think everybody ought to agree with me at all. But I do have an obligation to the taxpayers of Sparta to bring out comments and ask questions. So, if anybody wants to go on out the door, you go right on. It won't bother me a bit. Okay? You heard your chance. I'll keep it at three minutes. We agreed to move forward on this project because, for the all aforementioned reasons. Brian's worked diligently, former councils have worked diligently. We agreed in March. I gave my word. In my world, my word means something. I deal with a lot of people in the agricultural industry, my word means something. We agreed to move forward, we had the money, we were ready to go. Some folks came along, and they said, "No, we want the whole fund, we want the whole enchilada." And I said to those folks, "We've got 822 taxpayers in the town of Sparta. A lot of these, I think the median household income in the town of Sparta is about 24,000. That's nothing." I talk to these people, I live with these people, I'm around these people. You drive up and down the street. They're very proud, they work very hard to have what they have, and to pay the taxes that they're paying now is a problem. Now, these people are a bit skeptical. They were told years back, this is going to save, and when the shoe factory closed, everything's closed, all right, Bristol Compressors was coming, it was the greatest thing ever hit the world. And I had a little newspaper, which I was too outspoken with and basically put myself out of business, but that was my choice. But we would go around every week delivering those papers, and people were absolutely euphoric. "What about the factory? What about the factory? What about the factory?" I was on the town council. We and the county commissioners went into an agreement. Bristol Compressors basically played us like a fiddle against the town of Virginia. I spoke with Mr. Goode about this on Saturday. He said, "Yeah, you know, y'all got hung out pretty bad." The gentleman that's, we had a law firm in Raleigh, we had Richard, everybody assured us everything is good to go. Okay, we got hung out, Bristol didn't even stay 10 years, which I assumed they'd stay 10 years. The gentleman that represented us when we sued Bristol in North Wilkes-Barre came to Mr. Goode for a job, and he said, "I would not give you a job." So, you can understand why people are a bit skeptical. So, then we fast forward, and the Teapot folks came along. They basically wanted somebody to take over their collection and finance it. Well, there wasn't a lot of tax money went into it, there's 1.5 million in state and federal funds that were basically thrown away, that could have gone to help the town. Okay? Water Authority comes along, Independence needed, they didn't have any water. Had two wells, one of them went bad. We had 19 wells, 17 producing, half a million gallons. So, we said, "Well, we're going to be good neighbors," you know? And this water authority probably helped folks up and down 21, it wanted development. So, yeah, everybody jumped in. And we have the same amount of water coming, but our water bills and our cost of our system, which Brian has worked, this has been a 13-year endeavor to get this system fully integrated. The town's put a lot of money into it, we're on our last step, right? But still, we've got the water bills, these 822 folks here in town, and then the folks that rent, we're having problems with them paying. So, what I mentioned when these folks came before us, I said, "If this is going to be such a wonderful thing," and there's no doubt that it's got to be a positive, there's no doubt about that, then, and I said this to Richard, "We need private people, private investors, private contributors like you had for the hospital, to come in and take this 40-year burden off of taxpayers of Sparta." Because the way it's set up, if they tear into these water lines, now, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong on any step along the way, when they tear into these water lines, our sewer lines are terracotta pipe. Is that correct?
Millie, we will not be touching sewer lines.
At all. The sewer line terminates at Rita Woodruff's house, and it picks up down below Farmer's Hardware, and everything else is on the side street. So, sewer is not even an issue for consideration.
I understand the sewer goes back.
Well, we spent a lot of time engineering, got our engineer here with us tonight.
Right, right.
These plans have been well thought out for many years. This is not something we came up with the seat of our pants yesterday.
Correct, and I think I acknowledge that many people.
Well, when you talk about the sewer line, now, you've been on the town council now for many years. This project has been discussed literally at every meeting and every joint meeting.
Right.
So, you asked me about the sewer line.
Well, I know that we smoked them, and they were fine. So, that's why they're not included in this. But I've had people ask me, "Well, what about the sewer lines?"
They're not going to be tearing up the sewer line. I mean, and anybody who had that question.
Well, that's, that's what I thought. So, the sewer lines are not with the water lines?
No.
Okay, so, we're putting all our eggs in one basket as we've done in the past, and that's a little bit problematic. The town's got other issues that we are going to have to face and deal with. The wastewater treatment plant that we got during the Bristol years, we've been discussing that for the past several months, you know, that's 23 years old, 26, 23 years old. We've had some problems with that with all the rain. So, if we go into this project, I want people to have, your eyes open, and Ricky, he alluded to this, this is not a definite, this is not an absolute. This, you know, some things can go south just as easy. So, if we get into this, and they run into things that they have to be fixed that we didn't anticipate, then there is a stipulation in that contract that if they come across something that has to be fixed, they have to fix it. So, the price of this could go up.
Absolutely.
So, at that point, at that point, you chose to stay here and listen to me. At that point, I would hope that you all will be willing to ante up. A lot of you folks stood up and said, "You've got property here, you're going to open businesses here, and praise God and all your hard work." You're very comfortable. But if the town gets to a point where this thing balloons, then we're going to depend on you people to come in here and help us, because you have been emphatic that this is your town, and you love this town. So, if we get in a bad position, then we're going to expect y'all to chip in and help. And that's all I've got to say. I appreciate your indulgence.
I'd like to take this opportunity, as the mayor of the town of Sparta, to say that this is going to take a joint effort across the board, and I'd like to commend the commissioners for joining with us. We need their help, we need their support. Down the road, I do see Sparta continuing to grow. We are not going to board up any windows, we are not going to give up and quit. We're going to move ahead and change a little bit. And now, I have been very adamant, and I have took my stance from the get-go, that I did not feel like the burden should be on the town of Sparta altogether. Am I right, Ricky? Me and you had a big, long discussion on this, and I'm thrilled to death that the county sees the same way that I do. And I think this will lighten the burden on not only the folks that live in the town of Sparta, but it's going to benefit everybody across the board. I do want to address one thing. There's nobody that's going to want to come to Allegheny County with all the negativity that's on the internet. Period. A lot of you follow this stuff, a lot of you are on there, a lot of you know where it comes from. I'm not getting into an internet argument with everybody that disagrees with what goes on. But if people are seeing what we're bickering about and see that everybody's at each other's throats, they're not going to come here. I don't care how much music on main you put up there, I don't care how many new restaurants opens up, they're not going to want to come to a place where there's constant bickering. They're not. Would you? So, I'm asking you, and I asked this a while back when we had our little meeting, you have the power to stop this stuff. You do. You're the people. Stop it. Start talking positive about our town and our county. We're one. We're the only municipality in this county, so therefore, we need the county to help us, just as much as the county needs the town to continue to help them. So, we become one and we work together. Forget about the differences, find us something that we can cut common ground on, and let's go forward. I'm tickled to death that we're going to get the road paved. That's what I promised when I was running for mayor. We're going to get this road paved and get this water line done. Positive energy, folks. At this time, we're almost finished. I'm going to turn it back over to Mark for his.
Mr. Mayor, can I share one more thing that I should have mentioned earlier and didn't? It's amazing that Brian showed the percentage of grant money we have to the total project, which is, I mean, that's unheard of. And I've been told by numerous elected officials throughout our Saville County region here that there's no point going to Raleigh and asking for something if they don't see something going on. So, he's already got this committed, as much money committed, and we haven't done like Mike says, we haven't even dug any dirt up. So, I'm very optimistic that it's going to be additional funds come along when they see the county, the town are working together and see this project actually in motion.
I expect everybody to support our merchants in town. I hope to see you there, supporting these guys, because they're going to need you. When we tie this road up and this town, there's going to be significant construction going on. So, I hope to see each and every one of you on the streets supporting our merchants. I know Garrison will appreciate it, I know Robin will appreciate it, Chris will appreciate it. So, we've got to help each other out, and that's the way that we need to do it. So, I hope to see each and every one of you out there. Mark?
This time, I'll go to Commissioner Comments, I'll start to my far right with Commissioner Bill Osborn.
I hope to express, to express my comments.
All right. Bobby?
Just two quick things that I would like to thank everybody for being so civil to each other. You watch television, people are yelling, screaming, throwing stuff. We don't have that here, and I appreciate it. One other thing is, I'd like to thank Brian, the town council, for all the work they've done. And Ricky, I've got a cow, a good cow. And I'm not sure she's going to be alive in the morning, but if you could sell her to Richard Doughton, I would give you a little something for it.
Are you going to give him a skeleton?
Only comment is, I'm disappointed to learn I'm older than the water lines. I think that out of adversity and putting ugly on the table, some good can come once we know each other and that we have a pure heart wanting to advance. This county and this town, a lot of you that have moved here, you don't know the blood, you don't know the family connections that are in this county and town. We love it. Been all over the world, 32 countries, and no matter where I was on the face of the earth, I always wanted to come back here. It's worth keeping, and it's worth working together for. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to make mention, I'd like to thank Town of Sparta Police Chief Bob Lane, Deputy Ricky Roll, who also used to work for the town there. I think he's retired, and we're paying him big bucks. Am I right? I think I lost your check on purpose, but anyway. Now, we thank you guys for being back here, and thank God we didn't have to use you. So, anyway. With that being in order, on behalf of the town council, we will recess our part of this meeting until April 29th, when we will reconvene in the town hall at approximately 4:30 or 5 o'clock, a time that's yet to be determined. Is it 5 o'clock? Go ahead. 5 o'clock on April 29th in the Sparta Town Hall. And this is the purpose, to review the letter of the conditions from the USDA in the town council room. I will adjourn our part.
Okay. Recede?
Recede. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
On behalf of the commissioners, I do again just want to express everybody, your civil debate, your passion. This has been the most relevant issue since I've been a commissioner, or one of the most. We've had a few others, but not many. And I do think our support in the back, I think your presence is really appreciated tonight. You know, it's, united we stand. A house divided against itself will fall. And there's more that unites us than what divides us. We have our differences, we have different opinions, different positions, but we respect one another. And I love this community, I love serving the people. Nights like this can be a little bit challenging, but it's a very exciting day for me, looking forward to this and seeing the community. Whichever position you were taken, didn't matter. You came because you cared, and we, that unites us. Whether we agree on which side we're on, we come because we care. Keep caring, keep the spirit. And at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, make it known by getting up and leaving.